The time is now 5:01 PM on a Wednesday, October 8th. I hereby call this Finance Committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley is not in. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mishap?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have three members present?
We have three members present.
Madam Clerk, we now have quorum. It is now time for the reading of the Disorderly Persons City Code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code, Section 31-10, disorderly conduct, assault and battery of disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning if they persist in disrupting this meeting. The individual will be subject to arrest, and violators will be removed from the meetings. Are there any requests for agenda changes and/or additions? Seeing as how there are no requests for agenda changes and/or additions, it is now time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the City Council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box will be placed at the entrance to the council chambers for collection of registration. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public who have more than three minutes per speaker during public comment, members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaking, per speaker during public comment with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. First public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The first speaker is Reverend Freelon Thralkell Jr.
All right, before we begin, I would like to remind everyone, audience members and council, city staff as well, please make sure that your cellphones are either silenced or on vibrate. Thank you very much. Please start his time.
Good evening. To the council, my name is Reverend Freelon Thralkell Jr. I reside at 214 East Pulaski Street. I'm a longtime resident of Flint, Michigan. Matriculated in the Flint Public School System, graduated from the greatest high school in the nation, Flint Central. Central Indian for life. To the council, I'm here on behalf of the North Flint Food Market. I come praying. I come beseeching you to reconsider the past actions that you have taken concerning the North Flint Food Market. This project is very needed on the north end of Flint. And over eleven and a half years, this project has been in the makings. We need this because of the lack of healthy foods and opportunities for better jobs, and an opportunity to develop pride on the north end of Flint. We, as residents and members of this store, we want this store to be open because it represents the pride of Flint, to own something that we are part of, and that is a co-op. Community motivated, community driven, that the residuals will remain in the community more than a dollar bill six hours. It's time for us to move forward. So I come to you, asking you to get with us, help us to get this store open. It's time for Flint community to speak up, rise up, stand up, and get the job done so we can continue opening up this store and serve this community on the north end. We need this store. We've been down here several times. But I beg of you, reconsider prayerfully what you have done in the past for this store. Flint is a great town, but it's sad that certain areas are productive and others are not.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Carolyn Tyler.
My name is Carolyn Tyler, and I reside in the 3rd Ward on the north side of Flint. And I'm here to speak about the north side food market. This is gonna open, it's gonna open, but we would like the council's support in this. And there's the need for the market on the north side of Flint. The north side of Flint has long been underserved when it comes to access to fresh, affordable food and community-centered commerce. Residents in this area face what's often described as a food desert, a lack of nearby grocery stores or markets that provide healthy produce and essential goods. And establishing a market here isn't just a matter of convenience, it's a matter of equity, public health, and economic revitalization. Many north side residents must travel long distances or rely on costly convenience stores for groceries. A local market would bridge that gap, offering access to fresh fruits, vegetables, and nutritious options. Improved access to fresh foods helps reduce diet-related diseases like diabetes and hypertension, which disproportionately affects Flint's low-income and minority populations. The market could prioritize small business vendors, urban farmers, and local artisans, keeping dollars circulating within the community. From vendor operations to management and maintenance, a market would provide employment opportunities for residents and support youth training programs. A thriving market attracts foot traffic and can spur growth in nearby shops, cafes, and other local enterprises. Beyond commerce, a public market can serve as a safe social hub for neighborhood events, cultural celebrations, and community engagement. Revitalizing an underused space with a market signals investment in the north side's future encourages further public and private development. Markets promote local food systems, local food systems reduce transportation emissions, and keep resources close to home. Supporting a north side market aligns with the city council's goals of equity, economic inclusion, and sustainable development. It represents an investment in long-term community well-being, restoring trust by addressing residents' needs directly. Backing this initiative demonstrates Flint's community to share prosperity, neighborhood revitalization, and environmental stewardship. In short, placing a market on the north side isn't just a project, it's a promise, a commitment to restoring balance, opportunity, and dignity to a vital part of the city that deserves renewed attention and care.
Thank you. Next public speaker, please.
The next speaker is Darnell Ishmael.
Good evening. My name is Darnell Ishmael. I am an eighteen-year resident of Flint, Michigan. I live on the north side. I am a fully vested member of this market. I didn't come to praise the market. I came to ask a question. You've already seen the billboards. You've heard the stories and the soundbites. My question to you is, what will it take for you to change your mind? What will it take for you to change your vote? How do we convince you? We already have nine hundred members. I believe there's nine hundred at least other members who are about eighteen to thirty-five. What happens when they become members? Those members are hungry, and they're hungry for food. I've been planting food at my own house for the last fourteen years. I live one block from one of these so-called markets where I cannot no longer get organic food. Why? Because Myers is gone, and the refuse from Myers no longer comes to my neighborhood. I plant that food, and there are young men between the ages of eighteen and thirty-five who have come to my home and learned how to plant. And they've tasted corn for the first time in their lives, and said, "Mmm, I didn't know it could taste like this." What happens when they become really hungry for something else? More than what they'll get at the convenience store? That carcinogenic stuff? I asked those young men, "Where was the last time you went grocery shopping?" And some of them tell me, "Four months ago, six months ago." These are fathers. What did you buy? Hot Pockets, noodles? These are our young people in this city, and they're being starved nutritionally. And you have the power to do something about it. But what will it take? Do they need to mobilize and shop where you shop? Do they need to start going to your favorite store? We have a responsibility as citizens of Flint, Michigan, as residents, and to abdicate your responsibility because maybe it's not your thing, it's still a good thing. How does the good thing get your vote? At some point, the lion will be hungry, and he will hunt.
The next speaker is Bishop Bernadell Jefferson.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bishop Bernadell Jefferson, a member of this community, active member of this community. And I'm here because I'm part of the north end food market. Not, we say north end, but we ought to say Genesee County because it represents all of us. It's not just because it's on the north end, doesn't mean it's just for people on the north end. It's for everybody, fresh food. I'm here because we've been at this podium before, and we were turned down because you thought somebody else was investing in us. They didn't. So I'm like the gentleman that was before me. When are you gonna invest in what belongs to you? We belong to one another. If I fail, you fail. If this city fail, you fail. It is encompassed on all of us to stand together, to work together, to make it work. The money that we're asking for was the rescue fund, to my understanding. American Rescue Fund because we've been beat, we've been battered, we've been knocked down, we've been drugged. And now we're asking just a hand, a hand up. We ain't asking you to do everything, but we asking you to join with us because together we can be so much better. No man is an island, and we can't do this by ourselves. This money was put here to help our community, and I'm asking you, each one of you, no, the north end food market is not in all of your district, but it is in your city. It is in your community. When they look at the north end, they don't just look at the north end, they look at Flint. Everything that goes on, when they look at the development downtown Flint, they don't just look at downtown Flint. The housing development, every place, it depends that we work together. We're building it not just for one, but for all, to bring change and enhancement. And we can't do it without your support. I'm asking that you support us as a community that we can grow together.
The next speaker is Pastor Willie Ruth Moore.
Good afternoon, everybody. I do give you peace and love and the Holy Ghost, and thank you for a job well done for our city. My name is Pastor Willie Ruth Moore, and I reside at 6306826 Orange Lane, Flint, Michigan. I've been a resident here for almost fifty years. I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. Whatever seems so far was a store that's being opened on the north end of Flint, and the address is 5402 Cloud Road, North Flint Food Market. And I've been a member there for over ten years. What shocked me when I found out the other year that the city of Flint have not invested in the store, I was shocked. I said, "No, no." So I watched it when it wasn't no store at all, from ground up. I've been there all that time for a member of ten years. So we need your funding to help the store. Everybody say, "Leave a legacy." So leave a legacy. So we may not see it all, but leave a legacy. We ask you to fund this store. This store is there. It's a real store. When you get a chance, go by and look at it. I am so excited to have a store on the north end of Flint for those in wheelchairs, those on walkers. People can't get on the bus across town to get fresh food. They can, they can come right there and get their groceries. And I was so surprised to see over a hundred people put an application in in order to work at that store. Y'all gonna owe, I was so proud to see that many people and to go in that building just to see where it was from ground to nothing. You remember when it was just rubbish there? Take time and go in that store. Leave a legacy for your children, your grandchildren, your family, and say, everybody say, "We on it." We on it. So I ask you, City Council, please, invest in our store. Give us some money. Thank you. I love you.
The next speaker is Lathan Jefferson. Lathan Jefferson?
Hi, my name's Lathan Jefferson. I reside in Flint. You probably wouldn't notice me sitting back there in the yellow jacket. In sixty-three, my father would come to Flint. We grew up in Romulus. He would come to Flint. He would go down Detroit Eastern Market and buy his produce. And he would come to Flint and sell it and go back home every night for probably forty or fifty years. In seventy-six, I moved here because I seen this was a city that I could work in, go two blocks, six blocks away, and go fishing, go to the beach, go to a park, and do things in this city. Mr. Jarrett's father was the first black man to go south and get a semi truckload of watermelons and bring them back here and sell them on the street, and sell them in the community for a decent price where people could afford them. And it's needed on that side of town because what's not understood, the average group of children are eating Roma noodles and other stuff. They had a, they did a study in the schools because the children were throwing the apples and the bananas in the garbage. And then they went and did the study, and they found that the kids didn't know how to get into an apple or a banana in all races of the schools, not just the black schools. And fresh produce is needed in this city. I, my wife told me, she says, "I want to move to Georgia." I told her, "I'm gonna miss you." Because I love Flint, and I love to stay here. I love the people here. You know, and this is a beautiful town, but the building is already up. And simply help it. I sit here across from looking at a lot of you like you don't live here. You go back to the moon and stay. But if a person walks up to you on the streets, you can turn your nose up at them. But why not give that person a job? Thank you.
The next speaker is Jamar McKenzie.
Good evening, council. City of Flint residents, my name is Jamar McKenzie. I'm the Marketing Coordinator for the North Flint Food Market. For years, the Pearson and Cloud Road corridor has gone without a full-service grocery store. But now, we finally have one that is ours. A co-op built by the community, owned by the community, and designed to serve the community. On a personal note, this opportunity means a lot to me. When I was looking for work, many agencies left my application on red. But Dr. Flynn and his team took a chance on me. They saw something in me when others didn't. That's, that's what made this, that's what this market is all about, is believing in our own people and giving them a chance to grow. Our management team is now in place. We've started hiring. We are offering competitive wages to give people the opportunity to be able to flourish instead of just going to work and making a wage when knowing that our economy is in the position that it is in. I would also like to give a special thank you to NCG, which is our consulting company. They have done a phenomenal job with helping us master our roles and really get prepared for opening of the store. I just would like, again, to just ask that you guys take consideration and really help us with opening our store. Thank you.
The next speaker is Byron Smith.
Hello. I'm Byron Smith. I'm a manager at the North Flint Food Market. There haven't been many places around here that are good places. Like, not recently. You know, there's plenty of corner stores, or there's a Walmart, Myers, if you go to the other side of town, but actual good, healthy, something that would help you, we don't have many places of that. And you are the people who, I guess, guide, help to guide the city of Flint. And so I don't, I'm not lost, per se, but what my question to you is, is where is there a place for the young people of Flint, the people who maybe perhaps don't have vehicles, for them to go find them some good food or something that hasn't been processed in eighteen different ways? Like, it's a huge thing. People in the city of Flint move out of the city of Flint, not simply because they need better jobs, but because of how bad the food is. That's a part of it. I enjoy food more than y'all know. Y'all don't know me. I enjoy food. I'm looking forward to there being a place where I can go get fresh food that's close to me. I live within ten minutes of the store. Any other time or whatever, that's at least a twenty-five, thirty-minute ride because I have to go to a store, then I have to go back, and that's not including the walk-through of the store. It's beneficial for those around us, those that are supposed to be your community, that you supposedly help to guide. So with the benefits that I see, I don't see a purpose, or I don't see a reason why you can't see it. I can see bias. I can see bias. I know what bias looks like. But if you put faith into the community who you want to do better, I believe you will help us open up the store. Thank you.
The next speaker is Constance Connie Edwards.
Good evening. My name is Ms. Connie Edwards, known as Constance. I am a lifelong resident of Flint, Michigan, over seventy years. I am a resident in the 2nd Ward.
My name is Ms. Connie Edwards, known as Constance. I am a lifelong resident of Flint, Michigan, over seventy years. I am a resident in the second ward. I have been attending some of these council meetings for years. I have been concerned. I'm learning. But I want to share with you something tonight from the book sixteen nineteen. And I suggest all of us read it. But one chapter in there I want you to read is called Sugar by Hannah Jones. And it says, "Though black labors no longer play a big role in producing sugar, sugar still plays a big role in the lives of black people. Among all Americans, added sugar has been linked to growing rates of certain chronicled diseases, including those from which black people suffer the most. African-Americans are more likely to eat poor-quality processed food with high amounts of added sugar. In 2013, public health researcher at John Hopkins University used a U.S. census and the info of USA Food Day data to analyze supermarket availability by census. As poverty increased, the number of supermarkets decreased. But the prevalence of junk food, stock, convenience stores increased. And when poverty was held constant, the researchers found that black communities still had the fewest supermarkets. In 2015, the study of healthy food available in Topeka, Kansas, researchers at Kansas State University found that even low-income white neighborhoods were twice as likely to have a food store than a black one. Food deserts, food insecurity, they concluded, are perhaps the most important, delirious consequences of the residential segregation in the United States. The scarcity of one bad one, recent nutritional survey by the National Center for Healthy Statistics found that among children, adolescents, and adults, black people consume a higher percentage of their daily calories from fast food than they do Hispanics and whites. In other words, I am a proud member of the North Flint Food Market. And I want to say to you all, from James Baldwin, who said, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed unless it's faced."
The next speaker is Stanley Wood.
All right. First and foremost, I owe Councilwoman Lewis an apology for what I said last time I was here and got kicked out. It was uncalled for, what I said. And although you guys give us, you know, examples of proper decorum and sometimes lack of that, we shouldn't let us affect us negatively and act out on that. And I am guilty. I will be judged by one man about this, but in the end, I'm sorry, and it will not happen I want to talk a little bit about the rubber stamping and the Special Police Task Force for the blatant loitering. When Councilwoman Lewis specifically said, "I worked with Police Chief Green on this resolution." But according to Chief Green, two or three days later, he said, "No one talked to him about it, and it's not necessary." He said, "We just need to enforce the laws that are already in place." I got a lot of things I want to talk about, but let's talk about the north end food market. Right now, and I brought this up before, they've received in excess of ten million dollars in loans, grants, in-kind donations, memberships, stuff like that. My foundation has even said they would still give them more money. My foundation has deep pockets. The city of Flint does not. I would rather see this three hundred thousand dollars go to help underprivileged people that didn't have a chance to win four different lotteries to get their house redone and be able to get roofs or windows or things like that. I'll be the first to admit, I'll go with my kids, I'll go with my grandkids, they're too shocked to support them when it opens up. I just don't think this is the proper thing to do. So the city clerk, obviously you got my letter. There's seventeen days left right now. I assume you probably are working on it. That's just one request that I have. I will be coming with two other requests for residency to you also. I know one of them that you could probably use the excuse that that was done under Inez Brown, but in the end, you're the current city clerk, and your job is, when you know things are not right, your job is to investigate them, whether it happened in the past or not. It'd be like me going and robbing a bank, and nothing happens, and now a new sheriff comes to town and he said, "Well, I'm not going to investigate it because the last sheriff didn't investigate it." That doesn't work. You're being paid to do a job, and like I told you personally, I like you. I think you're a great person. But I think you're being manipulated by the current administration, by the city attorneys, and in the end, when you're left out to hang, none of those people will be there behind your back to, to help you. And that's it.
The next speaker is Tenacia Danes. I can't, I'm sorry, I can't read it.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Tenacia. I was hired as the Prepared Foods Deli and Bakery Manager at the north end of Flint. This speaks volume to me because I have a daughter. And when I go to the doctors, they ask me, "What does she eat and what does she consume?" Her weight fluctuates, messes with her asthma. We bringing something fresh to the city so I know it's coming from the farmers locally and even Detroit surrounding areas. But it hurts when she comes to me and tell me this tastes nasty. And that's because she's not accustomed and used to eating certain things. Me as well. My health fluctuates as well over the things I've consumed throughout the city. One thing I can say though, I speak for the young people. I am only twenty-four. My resume does speak volume, and they took a chance on me. They got me out of a situation of working at a fast food restaurant that's giving people high cholesterol, diabetes. And I'm watching people weight gain because they come so consistently. Why can't we see people getting shape coming to a grocery store consistently? You can see people feeling better. I recently went to the, I want to say it's the Green Tree Co-op, and that's in Mount Pleasant. And for me to taste the food there and smile, like, "I'm never, I'm never eating this, but it tastes good." We don't have that in the city. We don't have certain protein shakes that they have in the city. I watched a lot of people in our co-op, they look fit. Not saying it's, it's a crime to be big, but when you see a community that all look fit almost and know that they shop here daily, they open at seven, people is coming in at seven oh five to get salads, to get protein shakes. So bringing that to the north side, feel like that'll do a lot. Also, I speak for my grandparents that passed away. I lived in the city of Flint all my life, played sports, but my grandparents always wanted something like this, but unfortunately, they not here to see it, so I'm their eyes. So I'm gonna do what I can to build this up. I hope you all see it, see it too. You all, you all done seen people in the city. You all, you all understand what's going on. There's not too much I need to say. But one thing I can say, it takes time and pressure to make a diamond. So one of the world's most beautiful things, it takes almost a billion years to make. So trying to rush, you can't, nobody's be perfect. There's no such thing as perfection, but trying to rush something that's been thought out well, executed well, that, that, that'd never work. All I can say is I hope to see our faces there when we open up, come to the grand opening. Thank you.
The next speaker is Gladys Williamson.
Yes, my name is Gladys Williamson, and I have a few things I'd like to speak about. We're going to start out with this north end store co-op. I have nothing against these fine people and their wanting a store, but when the Meyer has to close down because of theft, the Krogers has to close down because of theft, and then the store that replaced the Kroger store had to close down because of theft, the odds in your store are not well. Now, the one thing you do got going for you is, is you're some God-fearing people, and I'm, I'm grateful for that because God is faithful to his people. But this theft thing, that bothers me. And when that person got up here and told me that he was going to run in the red for three to five years, that bothered me. Because the people of Flint do not have the money to keep funding this until who knows when. The next thing I want to speak about is the police that keep grabbing a hold of me. Because you know what? I know that you saw that my lawsuit was filed, and I want you to know that the tort was filed on top of the lawsuit by the cop white that grabbed a hold of me and sent me to the hospital on the tenth. Then I went to my family physician who has all the records of the MRIs that I've had on my hips, my lower lumbar, my knees, my ankles, and my feet. They are at a moderate to severe level of arthritis. And when that cop grabbed a hold of me and started shoving me around, he set me back weeks. And that's why I wasn't in here, because I was in such pain. Not to mention my blood pressure was through the roof when I got over to McLaren Hospital Emergency, through the roof. But I got news for you back there. If you think you're going to get away and chase me out of here, you will. I will not be chased away because I too have the Lord walking before me. And I will not be chased away. And I am sick and tired of grifters coming from Pontiac, Judy, wanting to do trees, weeping willow trees. Oui, grifters, grifters. Are these somebody's glasses? Somebody's gla, okay.
The next speaker is Brother D., Derese Martin.
I got a few things I want to mention today. First, Reggie Flynn asked me to come down here, speak on Navy half, say a few words. All I want to say is this, somebody got to break the trend. Somebody got to stop this downward trend because in every city where there's a predominantly black council, black mayor, and predominantly black school board, them the worst cities in America. No economic development, high crime rate, schools ain't doing nothing. So if our people fought and died for us to be in places of power that can help the community, then we got to start being ready to do that. How can we deny something that we need in our communities when that's the very reason you're sitting there? To be able to make it happen. People fought that for us to be able to have city council. Just in back in nineteen seventy-eight, I remember, I was a little boy, but I remember that everybody was out here voting. James Sharp became the mayor. Everybody was voting. Now, in two thousand twenty-five, don't nobody want to vote because everything that went to hell, it don't look like this worked for us. So we got to make some type of connection back to the community and do something because we just going to hell under our own leadership. Used to be the time we could blame white folk. We can't do that now. It's our own damn kind. Now, I want to address the brother. Because I want history to show me in the correct light. I want my grandson to one day say, "Man, my daddy was in trouble and all you did was dogging granddaddy." Especially when I live by faith, and my faith say you supposed to want for your brother what you want for yourself. This what I want for you, brother. What you going through now, I hope it make you a better man, a better muffin, more committed to the mission you was on. I hope it even make you find your purpose in life if you have not and become great at it, brother. Because we all done done things. I was with a man Monday morning having breakfast that wanted to kill me about his daughter twenty-five years ago because of what I done to hurt. So I'm not finna condemn this brother no more in public. I'm gonna pray for him. I'm gonna do whatever I can to help him become the man that he should be, and the reason why, because I ain't a nigger no more, I'm a black man. And that's what we do. And that's what I want for you, brother. True story.
The next speaker is Jason Die.
Hey, what's up, guys? Long time no talk. Kind of got my stuff all mixed up now from what I wanted to say because I'm seeing this co-op here of this market, and quite honestly, I love the idea of it. I don't know too much about the funding and this and that, you know what I mean? But I love the idea of organic food on the north end, you know what I mean? Like, it's crazy, and the food, they're attacking us through the food. You can look up everything I'm saying. Look up Appeal, A-P-P-E-A-L. That's what Bill Gates has, and what they're doing is putting exoskeleton around all of our food, and they're still labeling it organic. And when you look up what that exoskeleton is, that's to preserve it, it's straight-up insect shield, insect shells be the best way to say it? Look it up. You think I'm lying? Look at McDonald's, you know what I mean? They were talking about fast food in the black communities. Can you show me a commercial in the past three years for McDonald's that's had a white person on it? I can't. You know, they, "It's the neighborhood hangout." No, dude, it's preservatives. Do you know what they got to do to them French fries in order for you to eat them? Why they grow in these huge fields? Bill Gates owns that stuff too. Look into it. It's a freaking six or eight-month process before it touches your mouth. The crows and the birds that fly over top of these fields that are riddled with so much chemicals and pesticides, they fly over top of them and die. That's real. Look it up. You think I'm lying? Don't take my, as I tell everybody, I'm like reading Rainbow. Don't take my word for it. Look it up. I'm just bringing the truth. And also, when it comes to financing and such, I'm not that concerned anymore because everybody's, you know, I keep hearing from all these people, "Where's your lawsuits? Where's your lawsuits?" Bro, I got complaints. I got federal investigations. You think you ain't being watched right now? That's funny, you know? And I'm also trying to help out police and such too. I got a couple good cops that try their best, you know what I mean? I'm not going to name names because it seems like when I do, all hell breaks loose on them. But there's a couple good sheriffs named Sheriff Wigglesworth and Bouchard. Bouchard's out of Oakland, and Wigglesworth is out of Vingham County. Wigglesworth ain't the one you want to see neither. Wigglesworth took his own people and tried them, wouldn't even have them tried in Lansing or Livingston County. He took them right here to Genesee County and put them in prison. And that was his own prosecutor, some of his own deputies, all types of stuff. He don't play. He just had a situation where he did it with his own deputies. That's what we need. The good ones need to stand up and uphold these rights. That's their job, is to uphold our constitutional rights. That's a judge's job, to uphold our constitutional rights. Flint's like its own city, man. It's crazy, and that's why it was easy to get these federal investigations started. My God, you guys gave me enough ammunition. It was out of control. I don't even got probably half the stuff in or more, you know? I'm only one person. But anyway, I totally support that food thing. Have a great one. Have a great one.
The next speaker is Larry Tyler.
Well, my name is Larry Tyler. I was born and raised here in the city of Flint. I'm 71 years old. I was around when we had a lot of blacks stores and all kind of things that was going on that was very positive was going on in Flint. I was eight years old on the painting with my uncle of three stories high. It was all, we did a lot of things. Flint was, but I'm up here because we are seeds. Unless a seed is planted in the ground, it cannot bring forth no fruit. And that's what we're about here, is to bring fruit products and stuff to our community, to help build our community. Maybe a lot of the sickness and a lot of the craziness is because of the food. But I just wanna talk about how Flint, how beautiful Flint really was. Six ways that Flint changed the world. The bricks of Saginaw Street, the iconic buildings, the land and the people of Flint has been part of a deep and impractical history. It's history, it's a history that has helped to shape not just the life of its citizens, but also the course of the nation and beyond. General Motors in 1909, Community Schools in 1935, the sit-down strike in 1936, the wartime production back in 1942 and to 45, a 10-day 1995 fair housing in 1968. In the late 1960s, Flint led the way in civil rights in two specific incidents. In 1966, the Flint City Commission named Floyd McCree as the first African-American mayor of a major US city. Then, on February 20, 1968, Flint became the first city in the nation to pass the Fair House Ordinance. The city was highly segregated due to discriminatory housing laws and malicious practices of redlining. An open house ordinance was placed before the city commission on August 14 and rejected Mayor McCree resign in protest stating, "I'm not going to sit up here any longer and live an equal opportunity life." A 10-day sleep in protest was organized on the lawns of the Flint City Hall.
I'm sorry, that is your time. The next speaker is Donell Cannon. Donell Cannon. Next public speaker, please. Next speaker is Anita Loving.
My name is Anita Belkell Loving. I stay at 152 East Myrtle Street Avenue. I'm in the third ward with Ms. LaShine up here. I'm here because I'm a newbie to this. I'm a newbie. I'm 72 years old, but I got with my brother and this, all these good people right here. We believe in something. See, y'all have things and a lot of people don't believe in. And when you work hard at it and you see it, and then we get the opportunity to, what we putting in to give back, I think you should honor it, not just the color of our skin, but what's needed. See, what's needed. And we have the opportunity now for it to be needed. I know y'all heard all that riffraff and all that other stuff, but we need this. Give us an opportunity to show you, to show every one of you that this is something that's happening, we want it to happen, and we just want you to stand by. We just want you to stand by and give, at least give us a chance. Like I said, I'm a newbie in this, only been here for three years. But to hear these people and to see us work in our community, just like y'all got communities too. Hand it over. What you got to lose? Nothing. Ain't that what y'all told me? We got nothing to lose, but we want, we want this, we want this, and we want this. And like I said, my name is Anita Loving. Do you Anita Loving?
The next speaker is Michael Green. Michael Green. Next speaker is David Peche.
David Peche, fourth ward. I got, this store is just crazy. It's a scam, $300,000. They already spent between eight and 10 million, can't account for any of it. I asked a guy who does organize a co-op, I was, what if you don't get 300,000? He said, we don't really need it. They've been begging for it, but they don't really need it. What would they do if they don't get the 300,000? They gonna put that place up for sale? And I'm tired of hearing how bad it is for these people. Go over there and drive on Saginaw Street, all the way up to Wood Street. See all the new apartment buildings going up? Look at Burson Fieldhouse, 30, 40 million dollars going into that place. This new place, they got the cube, I don't understand that one, 40 million dollars there. They're putting money into this, I'm talking. This Hasselberg, they want another 180,000 dollars for that at the senior center. They just put a new ball field there. I live in a fourth ward. We have to drive a long ways to go to a grocery store because they had to close the other ones up because of the thievery. It just goes on and on and I'm tired of, feel sorry for them. They all look like they're eating pretty good to me. You know, it's just sad. The bank sit here and spend all our time worrying about 300,000 dollars. Turn it down, be done with it. Because if they could tell you what they're gonna use it for, the difference between losing eight to 10 million dollars-
Please pause this time. Please be respectful of the people speaking at the lectern. Go ahead, Mr. Peche.
I can't see where 300,000 is gonna make a difference to their store, but it could make a difference in our neighborhood. We could get some roads done or some more houses torn down, which you know it's a bad situation. You drive down Franklin Avenue, which today it's the St. John Street of what it was years ago. There's nothing being built. We have no apartment buildings going up. We have no new stores going up. We're closing schools up. And nothing, but boy, you gotta feel sorry for this grocery store. If you took that 10 million and put it in some of our neighborhoods, the whole community, when I say community, I mean all nine wards, not just one little community. It's sad. I get a little upset about it. But somebody's gotta say something. It's a waste of money. If they can tell you what they're gonna spend it on, or if it's gonna make a difference in that store opening or closing, then there might be a good reason. Thank you.
The next speaker is Chris Morris.
Thank you, good evening. I've been blessed to be working here, serving the Flint community as the interim general manager for the North Flint Food Market. My role is gonna be shifting here now that we've hired a GM from Flint, Ms. Patricia Wright, who's born and raised and worked in this community for her life. And I've been fortunate to be part of hiring the staff, some of which you've heard tonight, some of which weren't able to attend and speak for themselves because we've actually been sending them up to co-ops and neighboring communities. Tinasio mentioned he was up at Green Top in Mount Pleasant. We got two of our managers up at the Orianna Co-op in Traverse City doing training and development. And that's what part of these funds will be used for, staff development and training. You know, we're gonna spend about 1.8 million on wages and benefits for the staff that we're hiring for the community here, about 40 people. So we'll spend about 1.8 million over the next year on their wages and benefits. And, you know, this is a small drop to help us invest in those people and their growth. You know, there's national conferences that they can go to and learn, you know, things we can do internally and bring people in to help with their development and invest in their futures and continue to build. So, you know, I didn't make the comment that we didn't need this. I made the comment that, in a way, we're gonna open regardless and we're open in November. And we're open whether or not we receive these funds. And I guess, you know, part of that is that, you know, why it's important. You know, CS Mot Foundation has not committed any sustainability funds. You know, in any small business, it's tough the first few years, you know? But the funds from CS Mot, you know, they are investing because they believe in what we're building here, you know? And of course, North Flint's not the only community that needs it and I hope that we can help build a co-op down in the other districts as well and expand. You know, co-ops are just the most democratically organizations there are and it's fully transparent. You know, the grants that we received, there's been accusations of misappropriation of funds, but the grants that we received have been scrutinized, financial audits left and right. Every penny has been accounted for with receipts, you know? So, you know, so that's BS, I don't like hearing that. You know, and then I know there are council people that said, you know, if other organizations were to step up, Mr. Pfeiffer, I believe I was reading an article where you said if there were other funding, you know, CS Mot in particular, that you would be more willing, you know, to invest in what we got building here. So I would hope, you know, that you would, you know, fall through on that. And then, you know, there's been talk of abstentation. You know, we need everybody's vote. So there are members of our co-op amongst this council. And, you know, from our investigation, you know, our research, I don't think there's any conflict of interest. And we'd be more than happy to return your $250 investment, you know, to vote with us on this funding. And I would ask the city attorney maybe to weigh in and ask if there actually is a conflict of interest because I don't believe there is, you know, no more than the president casting a vote for himself, you know, for you. I mean, they can still vote in their district even though they're passing laws for their stuff. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tracy Spatsy.
Hello, my name is Tracy Spatsville and I live on the north side of Flint. I was born and raised in Flint. And I think, I look at that beautiful building up there and I got so motivated for the young people. And I was sending them up there to get jobs, you know? I thought, well, if they know we own something, they might be proud of their community. And they might stop stealing. They might, well, you gotta give them a chance. It's a beautiful building and they put a lot of work into it. And I hate to see that y'all just give up on them. Because they not giving up, they wanna see it go. And I would like to see it go. And give the people a chance and a hope and a dream. And then maybe the east side can see and get their hopes and dreams together. Instead of being upset because we are trying to do something in our community. We all need a chance. And I wanna know why, because y'all don't wanna give them a chance. And that's all I got to say.
Next speaker is James Moore.
James Moore, usual, I'm from Flint. It don't matter where you at in Flint, Flint is Flint. I wanna say to Mr. B, thank you for being a little small grocery store. I wanna say to Mark, thank you for burning, for painting the front part of your grocery store green so that they can see that you still doing lively things over there. I wanna say thank you to the grocery store over there off of Franklin that is on the east side. And I'm gonna even shout out to Save-A-Lot, we got two of them. But I wanna say this here. This is a big city, it's pretty empty. We could use more grocery stores. I don't wanna see a park at the end of that grocery store. I wanna see y'all put a bigger building at the end of that grocery store. I mean, we had two YMCA's, they tore them down, built one back there and one down. They gonna put up another one. They doing it for the downtown, start doing it for the city. We all live up in here, you know? I know I go all the way out to Swar's Creek to get my greens because they put water on them and you can see that they still green. Maybe we could help them so they could pay the water bills and the greens will look a little bit more greener up here in the city. But regardless, we need this. All nine of y'all up there need to figure it out. We need this and if you don't, get the hell out the city.
Next speaker is Mari Copany. Mari Copany.
Today is National Bullying Prevention Day. 32% of adults report bullying in the workplace. After attending several council meetings, it is clear some of our elected officials are straight-up mean. I strongly urge our council members to lead by example and not bully their colleagues or their constituents, not just today, but every day moving forward. We all know violence is out of control in our community and it's something that needs to be addressed, even without access to the scanner feed, which we really need to be unencrypted so our community can keep up with the crime in our communities since our local media and police do a terrible job of updating the community. Last week, a 15-year-old was shot during a shootout right downtown Flint in the middle of, in the middle of the evening, right around 3:00 PM today. Someone reported hearing 50 gunshots at the corner of Dayton and Dupont. While there is no single solution to fixing the crime in Flint, community policing makes a huge difference and we need to focus on some resources into the community for that. If you need a model to follow, call Chief Hall over or U of M of Flint. I'm sure as elected officials, you are keeping an eye on the political climate in this country. Things are getting really bad out there and our city has several communities that are at risk of being harmed by the moves federal elected officials are making. I hope we are trying to get out ahead of some of the chaos before it affects our community directly.
The next speaker is Kylani Copany.
One, two, three, all eyes on me. I'm Kylani Copany and I am 13 years old and I'm the city council kindergarten teacher. It's time to review our rules you should have learned back in kindergarten. One, treat others the way you would like to be treated. It's not nice to roll your eyes when someone else has the floor. It's also not nice to stare at people and like they are your worst enemy. Two, when someone is speaking, listen to them and give them your full attention. That means not looking down at your phone and texting other people, having conversations under the table or laughing at them. It also means don't interrupt others when they are speaking. Three, your tone means just as much as what you're trying to say. Talking to people in a condescending tone doesn't make them understand your point and screaming at them only makes them scream back at you. Four, don't tell lies. That means don't say you worked with the police chief on the Lord and Task Force when Chief Green said that would be redundant. Five, no bullying. That means both verbally and physically. You shouldn't be following people around, taunting them or threatening them. That also means keeping your hands to yourself. Six, no sleeping in class. You can't be civically engaged when you are up there drooling and dreaming. Seven, don't use ChatGPT to do your homework or to write your statements. Eight, shirts and shoes are required. That means keep your shoes on your feet and your feet on the floor. While you may roll your eyes and Google out these rules because all these are common sense, but for some reason, y'all can't seem to get it together and that's embarrassing.
The final speaker for this meeting is Arthur Woodson.
Good evening. Let me start by saying, this grocery store I am not against because I was the person who brought the information to Pastor Thrillkill and Reginald Flynn when I went down to DC and met with the USDA administrator, the chairperson, which was a Republican of agriculture, and met with Senator Debbie Stebenow. Pastor Flynn and Reginald Flynn and Pastor Thrillkill, we was on a radio show when I gave them this information and set up this appointment. Pastor Flynn and Reginald Flynn and Pastor Thrillkill, we was on a radio show when I gave them this information and set up this appointment. I am against the three hundred thousand dollars. I'm against it because we have in-home plumbing that needs to be done. Ms. Candace Masah, Councilwoman, when was the last time you went into the community and checked the lead in these houses? Because I looked at the LCR sampling spreadsheet, and they had a four-five-three-two. Matter of fact, they had two of them, and then it came from the same place, which is included in the sixty samples. So are they telling the truth or are they lying? You supposed to have the private, the community lab. We haven't heard anything from you about this, even since you've been on council. I have the sheet from Ms. Greenspan for the lawsuit. Mr. Pastor Thrillkill and I, along with Mayor Weaver and late Councilman May stood out there August of two thousand twenty to try to convince you all not to sign on with this lawsuit. Every single time, they come out with something that's different. It's supposed to be sixty-five percent going to the kids they have on here, seventy-nine point five. We didn't got over two billion dollars since the water crisis. Flint should be looking like Dubai, but we have ignorant council people who gives money to certain individuals and play politics and allow this administration to play politics with money. And y'all rubber stamp, and y'all give it to yourselves. That's what happens. Let me say this real quick. Councilman Leon Alamein, as a political figure and as a stand-up guy, you should not be allowing what's happening to the person who lives at that resident that you claim that you don't. Davina, clerk Davina, two tethered individuals cannot be tethered at the same house. She is a sexual registered offender. They putting her information. And as a man, I cannot put anybody through that situation just to stay on council. I wouldn't do that. And then she cannot be around kids. So they go to a parole officer. She's in trouble. As a man, you should resign so people could stop coming after you. For real, that I mean, that's that's crazy.
Thank you. That was the last of our public speakers, Madam Clerk.
That's correct.
It's now time for council response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers only after all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to address the speakers?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Winfrey Carter, and then Mr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I would like to thank all of you for being here. I would like to thank you for being engaged in the process. I do have a couple of things to say about the North Flint Food Market. I remember when Pastor Flynn first initiated this project, and he, you know, asked members of the church to become a member. So I, you know, I I listened, and I took my two hundred and fifty dollars, and I became a member. And I'm a proud member. I was proud to become a member. Because as a official, an elected official, how can I say that I'm for the residents of Flint and not put my money into the food mark? Now, my money is in the food mark, and therefore I will not rescind my membership just to sit here and vote. I am one hundred percent on board with the food mark, but I think it's very unethical to rescind my membership to be able to vote. If I can rescind my membership, then everybody else should be able to rescind their membership and membership and get their two hundred and fifty dollars back. I'm just saying that. That didn't that 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 didn't sit right with me. But I am here. I support the food mark, but I am a member of the food mark. So therefore, I will have to abstain my vote. Simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alamein.
Thank you. Just would like to say thank you to everyone for engaging today, especially our young people. It's good to see y'all down here expressing yourselves and being engaged in the process. So I want to encourage you guys to continue to do that, and I want to thank everybody who came out speaking in in support of the grocery store today. That's, you guys are definitely sending a strong message. The grocery store is in my ward, and I definitely support it. And I just want to thank y'all for coming down here again today and and sharing your importance of that grocery store. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Dr. Lewis.
Thank you so much. When ARPA funds initially came to the to America, to municipalities, they came here to make the municipalities resilient. I know cities use funds just like these to support these kinds of initiatives. And so we see that there is a big need in our community. We have a outside food pantry at Christ Our Hope, right there on the corner of Wisner and Pasadena. And I, along with Pastor Demetrius Turner and other concerned members, we fill that box up weekly because families come and literally grocery shop out of the pantry. So when I hear individuals say, you know, talk about that, you know, a grocery store will not be feasible, sort of kind of insinuating that we still on the north side, so we don't deserve a grocery store. I kind of get offended because of those are the people that I represent. And so they still everywhere. Shortage is an issue everywhere. Why? Because there's a need. And so with the food market, we are filling that need. And so I I saw some food membership people, you know, you all were clapping. And I'll tell you what was troubling. What's troubling is, you know, I stood in the shoes of my colleagues in the fifth and the ninth ward. And I was the person that said, you know what? Me voting to give the food market three hundred thousand dollars is way worth more valuable than that two hundred and fifty dollar membership that I have. I'd rather see the grocery store go forward and thrive instead of be selfish and make excuses of why I'm not going to vote. So I rescinded my membership because I wanted to see something bigger and greater. So I don't mind taking that hit, making that sacrifice. Because as an elected official for the second ward, that's what I was charged to do, to make those hard decisions. So it's not about me and what I want. The community said they wanted, nine hundred members said they wanted, and I'm voting for it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Jarrett.
I want to want to thank everyone for coming out. I'm not going to rescind my membership. This, this food mark, as was said earlier, for me personally, is about legacy. Back three or four years ago, our church had a hundred-year anniversary. And at the time, my grandfather was ninety-five years old. And I was charged with reading the letter that he penned that talked about, no, I'm sorry, the it was a it was a ninety-fifth year celebration. And he said, I may not be here for the hundredth, which was just a few years ago. And one of the things that my grandfather did prior to his passing in in honor too of my grandmother is he began the investment of our family into this market. So as opposed to rescinding my membership, I'm doubling down. I'm putting another two hundred and fifty dollars of my personal money into this, into this food mark and sponsoring, if it had to be somebody else's membership. But I'm 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 not going to to, for a performative matter, rescind the vote or or rescind my my membership to, uh-uh. I got to deal with me afterwards.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Jarrett.
Yes, I want to thank everyone who came out this evening to speak towards something that I have said from the very beginning is needed from this, needed in the city. I remember when Pastor Flynn and Pastor Thrillkill started this and how they had their campaign on the radio about Flint needing to own its own grocery store and be in charge of its own destiny and take care of ourselves because clearly, eleven years later, no one has come to save us from the food desert that is happening on the north end. The only people that have come to save us are the residents with their money. I'm gonna give y'all a couple of numbers. Forty, nine hundred seventy-five, thirty-one, twenty, and one. Are you asking me what those numbers are for? Forty, for the number of jobs that will be created by this food mark. Nine hundred and seventy-five members from our community who put their money into it, knowing that we do not come from a community where people just have two hundred and fifty dollars to give. Thirty-one Flint churches, who we all know the struggle that churches are having because members of churches are having an issue. But you had thirty-one Flint churches whose members said, let's put our congregational power behind that store and put our money there. Twenty, twenty-plus people who are sitting here on today to say, please reconsider how you are thinking and make sure that Flint takes care of Flint. Because while you had one point five million from my, that's not the Flint City Council. While you had a hundred and eighty thousand from USDA, that's not the Flint City Council. While you had one hundred and fifty thousand from Healthy Foods, that's not the Flint City Council. While you had two hundred and sixty thousand from HUD, that is not the Flint City Council. While you had one hundred and fifty thousand from MSP, that is not Flint City Council. What is, what can be from San Fiddy, Flint City Council is the three hundred thousand. And that last number, that last number that I gave you is the one, meaning we just need one more council member to stand up and say yes to the north end of Flint. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. We'll go ahead, and the next one we have is, we're, excuse me. Next on the agenda is reconsideration of Resolution two-five-zero-two-nine-zero dash T, reallocation of ARPA funds, North Flint Food Market Cooperative. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we reconsider Resolution two-five-zero-two-nine-zero dash T, which is the reallocation of ARPA funds for the North Flint Food Market Cooperative.
Support.
Supported by the councilman in the first ward. This is the vote to reconsider two-five-zero-two-nine-zero.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I abstain for reasons stated earlier.
Ms. Burns is not in?
She's in. She's not in chambers.
Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
You don't have it.
Mr. Garrett?
Abstain.
That's five yeses, one no, and two abstains.
You do not have five yeses. Two no's.
Four yes, two no, two abstentions.
That motion fails. Going on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved by the councilman in the in the eighth ward, supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward. Is there any separations? Go ahead. Two-three-five-two-three-six.
And that's all. Thank you.
Are there any others? Go ahead. Two-four-zero.
I think it's a typo. It's two-two-four-zero on the.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a typo.
It's two-four-zero.
Yep. Any others? Go ahead. Two-nine-nine? And two-five-zero-two-nine-nine, top page three. Any others? I have one. I have to look it up. I'm going to separate two-five-zero-two-three-four. Okay, any other separations? Hearing none, the consent agenda consists of the following resolutions. Two-five-zero-two-three-two, change order one, contract with Flood's Roofing Company, roof replacement of the water plant. Two-five-zero-two-three-three, grant award Michigan Department of Environmental Great Lakes and Energy, Flint River Watershed Support Grant. Two-five-zero-two-three-seven, Tyler Technologies, New World Systems, Police Management System Maintenance Renewal. Two-five-zero-two-three-eight, contract with curbco sweeping for sweet street sweeping. Two-five-zero-two-three-nine, grant spending deadline extension, state of Michigan grant, fiscal year twenty-six, police vehicles, Chevrolet Tahos, Harley-Davidsons, and community bus. Roll call, Madam Clerk. First, Madam Secretary.
Dr. Lewis is not in. Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamein?
You want to get Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
That's seven yes, zero no?
The vote is seven yes, zero no. That, those will be sent to council. Our first separation is two-five-zero-two-nine-nine, contract with Synergy Construction Group, lead-based paint hazard control abatement services. Was that you, Ms. Winfrey Carter, who made that separate? Oh, that was Mr. Jarrett. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Move to council.
It's a motion on the floor by the councilman in the ninth ward to.
Support.
Moved to council, supported by the councilman in the eighth ward. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
If we can ask Mr. Mr. Carpenter.
Is there anyone here from the administration? Is it Ms. Carpenter who's there? Mr. Carpenter?
Mr. Carpenter, yes.
I am.
Good evening, sir, as you as you're approaching. If I if I recall, is this the the resolution that we spoke about a few weeks ago? And it was basically, if I recall, the majority, if not all of this, was for one property?
Correct.
Okay, and there were some some pending things that you were gonna or questions you were gonna answer?
I I I addressed it that.
I'm I'm sorry.
I addressed that. I sent it to Davina.
Okay, my my email, I'm not having success getting into my email right now. But, okay, so do you recall what some of those are, if you can just enlighten me in this moment?
Yeah, the council is requesting the address and the property owner name.
Okay. And and if I recall, was this a historic building?
Correct.
And the grant itself doesn't have stipulation on a maximum amount per property?
No, as long as we are abating lead.
Okay. And and what is the process that you're going through now in selecting properties? How do is it, do we only, are there so few applications that everybody gets approved? Or is there a lottery of sorts? How does that?
I have over two hundred applications. It's a first come, first served basis. So whoever's approved first goes.
So whoever's approved first goes in the list, as long as they got all their documentation together and ready. We put them on the list. Once the contractors are done with the work, we move on to the next batch. Okay. First come, first served. Okay. Uh, I yield, Madam Clerk. I mean, uh, Madam Chair.
Is there anyone else who would like the floor in the first round of discussion? Councilman in the eighth ward, you have the floor.
Um, what is the address of this unit?
I don't think that they can say that over the mic.
Why, it's public money. It's, it's
It's federal money. It's not, it's not city money.
I understand that, but this is, this is a public forum we're voting.
Well, the way that we got the money, I'm not at liberty to address or say the addresses or the homeowner's name. If you wanna talk about that in private, we can do that, but I talked to my HUD connect. I was not able
Uh, can we please pause? Can we please pause? Pause. Go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Madam Chair, through you to the city attorney. The city attorney, this is not
You can unpause this time.
This, getting, uh, an address on where we're spending money isn't a closed session, uh, thing, right? So why, why can't that not, cannot the address be public? So we're gonna vote on something and, and the public doesn't know what address we're spending the money at?
Sure. Without more additional facts and to understand why he's saying he can't, he can't disclose it, I can't give you an answer right now. I would need to know the entire factual situation regarding this matter before I could give you an opinion. And I apologize, I'm not trying to stonewall you. That's just simply the truth. I don't understand quite what he, what, what his position is.
I got, I got three minutes. Can you go have a meet, meet with him real quick and find out?
No, not, I mean, not without researching this, no.
I don't understand how this is a private matter. If we're, if the, if the, if we're, they're government-funded dollars, how do we not? How is, how is that a private and a secret thing? I don't understand that. It doesn't make sense. There's nothing that we do when we allocate funds that is secretive. That's open and transparent government. Um, if you can't give me the address on this, then I certainly won't be supporting it. Uh, it to This is, this is how, like, how do we know that this isn't the mayor's house? Like, how, when you, when you hide behind something, then all the conspiracy theories come out. And I'm not, like, did somebody direct you to say that you couldn't say that? Did the attorney, did you guys meet with the attorney's office and they said, "You can't disclose this address"?
This is federal money, so
I don't care whose money it is.
You want me to answer the question? This is federal money, so the person that is giving me the money said I cannot disclose that information.
Somebody at the federal government said, "You can't disclose the address."
We're not spending city money, we're spending federal.
And you said that already, sir. So somebody at the federal government said you cannot disclose the address.
Correct.
I hardly believe that.
I can show you my contacts if you would like to. We can have a private conversation.
Without a city, without an address to know where this is at, I mean, this is at a council member's house, or the mayor's house, or somebody in the administration's house.
We not fixing houses, we are baiting lead. So it could be whoever house it is, we don't discriminate, we are baiting lead. We are not fixing houses.
But when we spend a hundred and six thousand dollars on one house
To a historical house. This was the lowest bid that I had. I had a bid.
I understand that, but when we're spending a hundred and six thousand dollars on one house, to me, that, uh, needs to be disclosed on what house was, was done. I mean, that, that right there, we've never done anything in the secretive. Even the, the houses that were in the lottery for, for home repair.
I've been doing this for four years and I've never disclosed information.
I didn't ask you a question. I'm reclaiming my time. We didn't, this, we didn't securitize anybody's house. And to say that we're, because it's federal money, we can't disclose that, I'm not buying it. I'm not buying it. To me, that right there, this right here is, 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 uh, I mean, it should be foible. There's no way that this not, would not be foible. So if it's foible, it should be able to be spoken aloud. So, uh,
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you, mister. Go ahead and pause this time. It is a HIPAA violation to disclose that address.
How? How? That's a medical thing. This is a, this is a home improvement. It's a home improvement. I disagree with that. So I, I, this won't be getting my support because I think that there's I mean, it's this right here, we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars on one house, and then the residents can't know what house? That doesn't make sense to me, so I won't be supporting it.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Um, so, understanding that, so you said federal money, federal money coming from, is that HUD?
Correct.
HUD, okay, great. And once again, thank you so much, Mr. Carpenter. Oh yeah, for your service. Um, so, understanding how addresses, um, and the disclosure of addresses can go wrong, you know, um, especially with this body. We've had council members go to people's homes. So what I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see anybody in the audience, anybody in TV land, or anybody on this body going to these people's home. So in terms of us not disclosing the address, I'm a hundred percent for not disclosing the address. Totally. I, and I would be. And she needs, she needs to be brought to order. Because we're talking about people's lives here. It is a blessing to be here. Isn't this a historic house?
Correct.
All right, so we understand that through the Historic Commission, you know, because we have one of those. And it is important to maintain the integrity of the home. So you just can't throw siding or throw something on it. You must maintain the historic integrity of the home. So it may make that home cost more than the regular house, like say a house on my block, I don't have a historic block. But I know, like, we do have a historic district, uh, Civic Park District is historical. I see, um, Mr. President of the Civic Park Civic Association in the back. And I trust that he can attest that they have a historic area with historic homes. And so I understand that it may cost more to restore a historical home. I also understand that when you give this body information like this, things may go left. And so what I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see people being victimized because they were afforded an opportunity to better their residents. So Madam Chair, I'm going to call the question so we can move on. Either vote for it or not. Thank you.
Okay, there's a vote for, there's a call for both support. It's been moved by the councilman in the second ward, supported by the councilman in the seventh ward, to call the question. Is the secretary there? This is the vote to call the question. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns is not in? Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson? Go ahead. Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Garrett?
No.
Mr. Al Alamein? Ms. Lewis, Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Five yes, three no? The vote is five yes, three no. This is the vote on Resolution 250299. Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns is absent? Ms. Machette?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Garrett?
No.
Mr. Al Alamein?
Yeah.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
That's five yes, three no? The vote is five yes, three no. That will be sent to council. The next separation is 250234, change order number two, contract with Weinstein Electric Company, additional electric services. Um, I'm the one who separated that, but I will let someone make that motion if they would like.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I make a motion to send to council.
Ma, mo, motion made by the councilman in the seventh ward, supported by the councilman in the first ward. Is there any discussion? You wanna hear why I want to separate it first? Okay, so I, the reason why I, I'm gonna take my time since seeing how no one is, is that if you look at the resolution, and I'm gonna look at it real quick right now. Is that the resolution says that it's for $10,000, but the resolution says it's 98,000. So is there anyone who can address this one? Cause the resolution states that it's resolved for another 10,000, but the funding says 98,000, and I want clarification on that. Shame is that's 250234 Weinstein.
Can we stop your time?
Nope. Keeps going. Hello?
Hi.
I was totally confused with this. I understand that the where is and it's resolved the 10,000. Um, but the fiscal year 26 grand total of 98,000? And then it's for revised aggregate, three-year total of 458,000. There's a lot of numbers there. But I just wanna make sure that we're only approving the 10,000 needed.
Yes, um, what happened when this, uh, resolution, I believe, was presented to you earlier on, and Lauren Rowley isn't here, the purchasing director.
I can barely hear you.
Um, the purchasing director, Lauren Rowley, when she originally presented this resolution to you, it covered multi-divisions within the city who utilized Weinstein. At the time, the water plant didn't need electrical repair services, but due to the fact that we have an electrician that is out, we then had to come about and add $10,000 to it. So this lump sum covers not only an additional 10,000 from the water plant, I don't know what the other, um, department's total was. And that's why you have that total that covers all divisions within the city of Flint.
Okay, when I read that initially, when I received it, um, before it was put into our packet, I was questioning that. And so I wanted that clarified. Okay, any of that, that was the first round. Is there any discussion in the second round? Seeing none, this is the vote to send 250234 to council. Thank you. You're welcome. Ms. Winfrey Carter? Is not.
Yes.
Ms. Burns is not in? Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Garrett? I'm sorry. Ms. Machette? Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Girl Al Alamein?
Yeah.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Vote is eight yes, zero, zero, zero no? Vote is eight yes, zero no. That will be sent to council. The next separation is 250235, application of proposed budget seniors, millage funding, Genesee County McKinley Center.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to leave this here in finance.
The motion, motion by councilwoman in the seventh ward, supported by the councilman in the first ward, to leave in finance. This is the vote. Ms. Burns is absent. Ms. Machette? Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yeah.
Mr. Al Alamein?
Yeah.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Vote is eight yes, zero no? The vote is eight yes, zero no. That will stay in finance. The next resolution is 250236, application of proposed budget seniors, millage funding, Genesee County, Eric B. May Senior and Community
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we move this to council.
Support.
There's a motion on the floor by the councilwoman in the seventh ward, supported by the councilman in the first ward, to send to council. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Can't express enough how important the center is to the residents over there. We have a large population of seniors who frankly attend many services that's taking place over at the center. Um, we even got a, coming up here soon this weekend, um, the senior pageant, um, for the seniors and so forth. So there's a lot of programs that the seniors and, and regular folks in the community benefit from, from this center. And I think it was, uh, it's very important that we should really consider supporting this and keeping things going. If not for anything, for our seniors who, who should be our most, uh, who we should be looking out for the most and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion in this first round?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I am in support of us, um, seeking senior millage funding for the Eric B. May Senior Community Service Center. Um, it is a well-established senior center in our community. Uh, I think that, um, the way that it is currently running, it has been, been run quite well. I heard some of the, uh, seniors who left earlier this year have also began to return to this senior center. So we do want to make sure that, um, as we're servicing our seniors, we are included in any, any millage funding that can help us in those services.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Garrett.
Uh, through you to, or can we request Mr. Moore?
Um, Ms. Whittigan is back there.
Pardon me?
Ms. Whittigan is back there. Wiggins.
Yeah.
Oh my God. Sorry. So sorry.
Right.
I'm sorry. I know it's Wiggins. It's just too close to, yeah, you and Mr. Moore.
Some of my initial questions are with regard, what would be best for Mr. Moore? Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm doing great.
Good. Mr. Moore, good evening. Currently, Mr. Moore, how is this center being funded?
The staffing is paid for out of ARPA dollars. Uh, there's, some of the dollar, uh, are coming out of the park fund. And, uh, we've been just putting pieces together as we can to, uh, to make it work. It's pretty bare bones right now. Uh, our goal is to have, if we can get this, we can increase the funding and, well, I think we'll have a much better program.
So those were funds that are, you saying, being utilized out of ARPA, which, once they go into that general fund, they can just get used however, right? Is that, is that the understanding?
Could you repeat that question?
The, you mentioned the ARPA funds.
Yes.
So is, those ARPA funds are being taken from when the money was transferred to the general?
They, uh, I forget which pot that ARPA dollars were, but that was something which was already approved by the city council. And, uh, we just, uh, used those positions, uh, for the, uh, community center.
Okay, so they were, basically, we real, reallocated funds designated other places for here.
Right. It, it fit the, uh, the, uh, the resolution quite well, actually.
I'm sorry?
It fit the resolution that was presented, so it made a natural fit.
Are you saying there was a resolution sent to us specifically to fund the center?
Uh, no, no. It was part of a, a bigger package.
Okay, to you, uh, Mr. Moore, currently, there are two senior centers in, well, should I say? We, we now have three senior centers that are being ran in the city. Do you know, uh, that or if the county has allocation for three centers?
I don't know an awful lot about their program.
I'm sorry. No, I'm, I'm talking about the, cause, cause this is, this is to request funds from the county, correct? Do you Do you know that the county has funds allocated for three centers in the city of Flint? Or actually, it would have been four with the McKinley. Does, does this county have funds to support four centers?
The county has funds that we're eligible to apply for. And we have an excellent program, and this will make it better.
Okay, so, so are we going to be in effect, taking funds away from a existing program?
You'd have to ask the county that.
Okay. And there was a, somewhat of a budget that was included. Does that budget represent what we are currently expending at that site?
This would be above and beyond that.
I'm sorry?
This would be above and beyond that.
No, 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 no. What I'm asking is, for what we are currently spending, is the budget that was included here, is that in alignment with what we are currently spending?
No, no, this is something different. This is above and beyond what we're currently spending.
I don't know. Am I not being clear? This operating budget shows that the, the request would be for about $132,000. I'm sorry. No, the 176, you're right. That one was more. Are we currently spending more than that amount to support the center that's in place now?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. All right. Ayew.
Madam Chair. So, Mr. Moore, I think what my colleague in the ninth ward was trying to say is, what is the total budget for the May's Center? And is the city matching these funds? Is it going to be a $300,000 budget? Or are we saying that 176 is all-inclusive to, to support this center?
You're welcome. I'm not sure. I don't have the figure for the other funds, but we're not spending 132 right now, I don't believe, or below that.
You're not answering my question. What is the total number that it is anticipated to run this senior center for a year?
The budget is 170. We're talking, our projected.
Yes, for the, for the entire year.
For.
Whether or not we get these or not, what is our total budget for the May's Community Center to run for a year?
For right now, I think.
This doesn't, that doesn't include the salary.
We'll have to get back with you on that, because the, the funds have been coming from different areas and.
Give me, give me, give me a ballpark number. I won't hold you to it.
What did we come up with, the budget we had was?
Three, four?
No.
No, no, no.
No, no, no. It, it was about 120.
That's all right.
And that includes the salaries? What do you mean? You're saying 120 on top of this, right? You're not saying 120 total?
That's correct.
So we're, we're saying that the salaries which aren't included on this, we're only going to be allocating 120,000 for salaries? Is that what I'm hearing, or no?
At this time, I think we only had for one person for salary, two people for salary.
Right.
So with the salary, it'd been about, it was about 132.
If my memory serves, it's a little bit less than 130.
Yeah.
I want to say it's between 120 and 130.
So outside of the salaries, the city is hoping that this senior millage dollars will cover everything else other than those two people?
No, the, the millage is going to cover things, some of the.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, okay. The millage is going to cover various things like programs, instructors.
Right, I, I get that, Ms. Wiggins.
Yes, okay.
What else is the city looking to spend at this place? Outside of this millage, what is the total dollar amount? That's what I'm asking.
Okay, we don't have a total, because you're talking, you're talking, you're asking us, does it include the salaries? The salary is not.
No, you already said that the salaries are about 132 on top of it.
It's not included in this, 132. But, but we're, yes, it's not included.
So what above the salaries are we looking to spend?
You have utilities, you have ground maintenance.
Utilities are on this, so the utility, this is only a portion?
That's not the entire utilities.
So you don't know the total dollar value that you're looking, like you don't have that number, but you know that this is only a portion of what you want to spend? Like, how do we not have a complete budget? I mean, how do we know that we don't go to the county and ask for 300,000? Like, how did we come up with this number?
When we go to the county, we're going to be presenting this resolution which has.
No, I understand that. I'm asking, you're asking, not answering the question that I'm answering. How did we come up with this dollar amount to go to the county instead of the 300,000 or what?
Okay, so we're, so we're looking at the May's, right? The May's Center, right?
Yep.
Okay, the May's Center, which is 176,000, right? That's what we're looking at.
Request for information. Is this the budget that we're proposing for the county or to the county?
This is the, this is the budget that we're proposing that they fund.
Thank you.
But that's not what this says. It says the senior center operating budget. This doesn't say, like, I want to know the overall budget. What's the overall budget?
Okay, we, we haven't, we, we don't have.
So how did you come up with this dollar amount?
We came up with this dollar much by.
So you, you did a partial budget in, like, so you, you did a $400,000 budget, and you went to the county and said, we're going to get 40% or whatever that number is. So, so if you don't have a total overall budget, how did you come up with this budget and this dollar amount? Thank you, Ayew.
Madam Chair. Thank you. Through you to the city attorney. Attorney Sparrow, how are you this evening? Good. I do want to address the question. I know that we are using call for the question right now before we get into this. And I want to ask you, because it doesn't state, in our council rules, it says to vote immediately, but it does not state call for the question. And Roberts Rule 12th Edition is very specific as to when we're stating. We're not saying I want to vote immediately. They're stating call for the question. And so if you don't have the answer, I would like to send a referral, because if we're doing call for the question, which is Roberts Rules 12th Edition, that means we have to have two-thirds vote, which means we need six votes. And right now, we are a body of nine, and we should have two-thirds. It's not, Roberts Rules does not acknowledge voting immediately. It's call for the question. So I want to make sure we are in order.
Point of order.
What's your point?
I just want to refer our colleague to the council rules. Keeping in mind that, that the charter trumps all rules.
Point of order.
What's your point?
That is not a valid point of order.
That's for me to rule on, not for you. Go ahead.
Okay. So councilwoman in the sixth ward, are you aware that council rules override Robert rules? And within our rules, it states that we only need five votes to call for the question. Are you aware?
So first of all, you did a point of order. I didn't break the rule, so you took the floor. She needs a warning. So I do want to state this. If, I would like to have a referral, because when I spoke to some other attorneys, language is very specific. In other municipalities, it is required for six votes, two-thirds. And there were some issues with our rules. But I'm going to move on. Thank you, Attorney Sparrow. But I don't see the clerk over there. I would like to have a referral for that, so that we are in line with what we should be doing. So hello, Mr. Moore, Mrs. Wiggins. How are you?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, good.
Just smiling.
So I know that the county has a, a minimum. Are you doing for a tier one or tier two for your application?
We're doing for a tier one.
For a tier one?
Yes.
And how many members do you have?
We, we have about, about 150 members.
150?
Yes.
When will you have, I, I was listening to Councilman Pfeiffer. When will you have a full budget so that we know how much it costs to run the McKinley Center and the May's Center?
Collectively, you, you want a budget that reflects both centers or just?
Yeah, yeah, each center, because you are the director of both, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, separately for each one, because each one is different. I believe we have, at the McKinley Center, it's also shared with the Southside Coalition. So that's not just a senior center. And that may make a concern for me when it goes over to the county, because the county's funding is specific to it being a senior center. And it does not, so I don't know if we're going to have some issues. That's, those centers. I know McKinley.
Ms. Burns, please be, be specific to the May's Center. McKinley is stated in, stated in finance and will not be discussed at this meeting.
Okay, y'all can be nasty if you want to. But when we're looking at budgets, which is what I'm doing.
We are looking.
And I'm not, excuse me, are you taking the floor?
I do not have to. I'm the chair, and I'm calling you to order.
And so we're, excuse me, whatever, Judy. And so when we're talking about the budgets, what else? The May's Center is a community center. It's not just a senior center. Am I correct?
Well, all the centers are basically community, but we specialize in senior citizens.
Correct. So again, and the centers do the same thing. This is what I'm stating. We're talking to budgets, which they clearly don't understand what a tier one and tier two is. And so when we're saying a community, and that is my concern, if you're running the facility, the May's Center or the other, we have two centers, it's not just specifically just for seniors. And so with it being a tier two, I would like to see at some point, like, the full budget that you do have. I thought that senior, I don't know what to call it, pageant, I thought that was nice to do for the seniors. But if we could get like a full, a full budget, but was that a concern? Mr. Moore, did you do the paperwork to fill it out or? Because last year, they said it was the worst paperwork they'd ever seen. That was what they stated when I went over there.
I didn't have any part in filling out the paperwork.
Okay. So are you doing, who's doing the paperwork, the application to go over?
To, to.
To the county.
Myself and the attorney, we're doing it, yes. For the millage, correct?
Right.
Yes, the application.
Right.
The application is completed.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it didn't have the resolution.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. So, hello, Ms. Wiggins. And thank you so much for serving at the May's Center. And I'm aware of the various health and wellness programs that take place there and the great work. And it's great for our seniors and our community in general to have another place, a continued place where we can continue to serve them. So in honor of our council rules, I would like to call the question.
It's been moved and properly seconded to call the question, but moved by councilwoman in the second ward, supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward. This is the vote to call the question.
Excuse me, point of order. Mr. Wilson is talking loud and yelling some obscenity probably towards me from the first ward. Again, this is not a place for that.
This is, Mr. Woodson, please keep your comments down to yourself. Yes, we can hear you. At Mr. Woodson, that is vulgarity. You are being called to order, and that is your first warning. Thank you. Go ahead. This is the vote for calling the question.
Um, excuse me, he's still yelling out, talking about me and my hair and etc., and calling me names. Interrupting the meeting, so this is where we are. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, Madam Chair. Making me uneasy sitting in my seat as you continue to stare and call me names. And disrupt the meeting.
Let's go ahead and, and do the vote. And Mr., he has one warning, and he will get re- removed if necessary. Go ahead.
So for the record, I do want to acknowledge what Ms. Burns has brought up. And the council rules do state that it's a motion to vote immediately until a legal opinion is rendered. We'll honor the call to question, but the council rules do have a different language, and it has been brought up several times. So I just want to acknowledge what Ms. Burns has brought up from the floor. But we will go ahead with this vote until a legal opinion is rendered. Ms. Muschett?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Jarrett?
No.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
I abstain, because our council rules do not state anything that states call for the question.
Point of order.
What's your point?
Well, our council rules do say that you must abstain because of personal conflict, and that's not a personal conflict. So that's a violation of council rules abstaining.
You are correct.
Nope, you're not correct. You're incorrect.
It's not the council rules, it's the charter.
Point of order.
What's your point?
My point is, we have been through this. My conflict is my conflict, which the chief city legal attorney has stated that. She's saying and putting information on the floor that's incorrect. And we don't have a call for the question in the council. Y'all making up stuff.
Please announce the vote.
The vote is five yes, three no, one abstention.
Vote is five yes, three no, one abstention.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This is the vote to send 250236 to council.
It's the vote to consider. I mean, it's the vote to call the question.
No, we voted, that was the vote, five, three.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead. You're correct.
Voting to, on the resolution.
Point of order. Is Madam Clerk saying that we can't do that?
That's not what she said.
That's not what she said. She said that she was going to.
She said she can record the vote, but she's saying that it's an invalid motion.
No, she didn't.
No, she did not.
What I, for the record, what I stated was, I'm acknowledging what Ms. Burns is bringing up for the record, because the council rules do not speak to call the question. It did in the past. However, the council rules do have a motion to vote immediately, which is in effect the same thing as a call to question. However, she has asked for a legal opinion. So until that legal opinion is rendered, then we'll go ahead with the call to question. But again, the rules do have a motion to vote immediately, which is basically the same thing. It's just different than Roberts Rules. So I would also.
So then, Madam Clerk, for clarity, should we just say I make a motion to vote immediately?
Yes.
That would be the correct.
This is.
Thank you.
We are, we are now on the vote.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Jarrett?
No.
Mr. Alamein?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
I abstain, because they use call for question. We don't have that language in our council rules.
Ms. Muschett?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, three no, one abstention.
Vote is five yes, three no, one abstention.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a question to the clerk. Madam Clerk, a motion is always in order, correct?
That's correct.
Even regarding our rules, correct?
That's correct.
I make a motion, Madam Chair, that moving from this day forward, that we can say both call the question and vote immediately interchangeably.
Point of order.
Support.
Point of order.
Here's a.
A public hearing has to be held if you're changing the vote, if you're changing the council rules.
You are correct. I withdraw my motion. He is correct. Madam Chair? Madam Chair? Right, Madam Chair. Um, I make a motion that we reconsider Resolution 250290-D, which is reallocation of ARPA funds for the North Flint Market, Food Market Cooperative.
Support.
There's a motion on the floor to reconsider 250290 for the ARPA North Flint Food Co-op. This is the vote to consider, reconsider. They, they, they can reconsider.
Mr. Jarrett?
Believe that is in order, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it is. Mr. Jarrett?
This is the vote to reconsider again. This is the vote to reconsider again.
Reconsider?
The North Flint Food Market.
Again, I abstain.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I abstain.
Ms. Burns?
I abstain.
Ms. Mushat?
Yes, she can abstain from that, but okay, yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
The vote is four yes, two no, three abstentions?
The vote is four yes, two no and two abstention, that motion fails.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the city attorneys for a legal opinion because I believe our charter says that the abstention has to be that there is a financial tie to their abstention.
They also have to, also says that-
And they also have to state their reason for abstention.
What is your question again?
I just want clarity because I believe our charter states that if they are going to abstain, that it, one, they have to cite their reason for abstaining and then two, that the abstention has to be because it is a personal conflict or a financial conflict.
If you could submit the question, I'll be happy to answer it and send it to Ms. Gurley, get you an actual opinion. Thank you.
Madam Clerk? We do have to cite our reason why we're abstaining and neither of the three of them cited their reason why they're abstaining. I do understand the two of them have said it several ti- two of them have said it several times, but I believe that we are to cite our reason for abstention.
I'm looking up, I know that, and I believe it was Attorney Gurley that may have given a legal opinion on this. So I'm looking for that opinion now. So if you wanna-
Forced speech, you can't do it. Forced speech, you can't compel forced speech.
Uh, point of order, are we in recess? I'm not talking to you, okay? Yeah, just nasty.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, motion to send 250240 to council.
Support.
Madam Chair. Is there anyone that can speak to this? Grant? No, sir. Madam Chair, is there any, can you announce to the administration? Mr. Smith, I see the dollar amounts for each of the individual categories on this. Do we have a, like, how are those dollar amounts going to be allocated? Is a sign-on bonus 5,000, 10,000, like, what is that dollar value? How many sign-on bonuses do we anticipate coming out of these dollars?
We don't have an exact number of bonuses, but they're 5,000, 7,000. As if they're a licensed officer, it's going to be 7,000. If they're coming out of academy, it's going to be 5,000.
What about the retention bonuses, is that going to every officer?
That's going to a program that they are setting up.
I'm sorry?
It's going to a program that they've set up for retention, hiring and retention. So it really depends on the number of years they've been here and the number of their rank, so that's all determined by the police officers and the chief of fire.
So this is going to the chief of police and the fire chief as well?
Correct. This is a grant.
Since when do we give retention bonuses to appointment?
No, not to the chief, they're over the program.
Oh, oh, I-
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
I thought you said that this is going for the chief of police and the chief of fire.
No, 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 no.
I'm like, when do we give retention bonuses to those folks, okay, I understand. Is the retention bonus going to be lump summed or is it going to be-
No, no, we're not gonna do that.
Progressive?
Correct.
Okay, I don't want anybody getting a retention bonus and giving us the wave goodbye after the end.
Absolutely.
Okay, perfect. How is the performance bonus, what is that metric for fire?
I don't have the metric with me for fire, but it is based on-
Because it's only for fire, right, there's no performance bonus for police?
Correct. They set it up differently, I mean, when we, when I applied for this grant through the state, it was based on each individual responding group, the fire and the police coming up with their own plan on how to use this. Fire department had decided part of their plan would be performance-based.
So, like, I'm just trying to figure out how is it going to be measured, can it be measured by attendance, by, like, how do you do performance-based, like, are they tested?
Well, I don't have, I don't have the matrix for the performance for the fire, but I can provide that.
Can you look at, can you ask Chief Wiggins on, just, like, how, I want to make sure that it was graded equally and not, you know, I don't, I just like to see how it's going to be graded.
Okay, I can provide that, I can get the chief to provide that.
And then, the professional development for the fire, is that outsourced training, what is that?
That would be outsourced training.
Outsourced training?
Yes.
And is that going to be level-based, meaning, or is it going to be for all people, for all employees?
All, all employees.
Okay. Do we know who, we don't have a vendor for that yet, okay?
No.
Okay. And then the timekeeping software, that's a dollar amount, don't we have that with the HR system?
No, 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 no. This system allows us to, police and fire, there's a very complicated time and attendance tracking mechanism.
Any other discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, good evening, sir. Is, is there a greater, I guess I'll call it, problem in recruitment and/or retention, one body over another? Does fire have a greater problem or does?
I would put them equal, you know, if you're talking about the difficulty in hiring and retaining, equal across the board. We're competing with all of our local fire departments, local police departments, so I would say it's equal. It's very difficult to, you know, compete.
So, so when we look at this, for example, the sign-on bonus and it's for fire and police and it's 450,000, are we sort of splitting it down the middle or whichever one has the most sign-ons first gets whatever?
No, it's divided up between each one, they've got their own budget and it's spread out over 18 months is really what it is.
So they'll both have 225?
All per.
Okay, and the same with the retention bonuses?
Yes, they're, it's, I'm not sure the exact amount, but the total dollar amount is built into that, but we can provide that.
I'm sorry, the total amount what?
The total amount of retention bonus dollars, it's in your document there.
Yeah, yeah, the 650, the 650, but what I'm asking is, is that also going to be sort of equally divided? Or maybe because, or are there more police officers than firefighters? Is the staff about the same size?
No, there's different numbers for each one, I mean, police is a little different total and so is the fire, fire department's a little total difference.
Okay, I guess I'm just trying to, you know, understanding this as to if one department is gonna receive greater advantage over the other.
Yes, it would, I mean, I would say the police department's gonna have a greater dollar amount that's built into their budget because they have a larger group that they're recruiting for.
That's exactly what I was getting at, thank you. That's all I have now, I yield.
Any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? I want to thank you, Eddie, for applying for this grant, you and I had, Mr. Smith, sorry.
Been over a year.
I thought, I'm glad that you took the initiative to bring these dollars to the city and I want to thank you very much for that because we don't normally hear of the HR department going for grants. So I think that's a wonderful thing and I want to give you kudos for doing that. You and I spoke on it and quite extensively on the phone one day. So I appreciate that and do you want to go ahead and, because Mr. Pfeiffer had a question about the time and record keeping, I will give him my rest of my five minutes to answer that.
The software that we're purchasing is a software through you-
Point of order.
What's your point?
I'm sorry, I didn't know how else to ask, you said you're gonna do the rest of your five minutes to do what?
I'm giving him the rest of my four minutes to ask, to answer his question that-
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Software that we're going to use is through a company called UKG. UKG is also the company that we're going to be using citywide to do our time and attendance. They have a very specialized program, software for police and fire and that's where that software is going to be implemented.
Okay, thank you very much, any discussion in the second round, go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Thank you, I use UKG every week, I understand that. What, so that is not a purchased program? That is, we pay, that's a monthly fee, so how, how long will this 160 cover that fee?
That's gonna take care of installation, the purchase of the software and the timekeeping devices and it'll go over an 18-month period of time.
And that is only for the police and fire?
Correct.
So in 18 months, we gotta come up with another 160 to keep that?
No, it's just the monthly rental after that of the equipment.
What is that dollar amount?
I can get that for you, I don't have the monthly rental because it depends on the number of systems that we install and locate.
So what are we, because my, my use of UKG is all cloud-based, so what are we purchasing?
We're purchasing the time clocks, different things like that that we're installing. We have 18 that we have, actually 20 time clocks that we're purchasing for the city and through UKG that we purchased for the city through UKG. We're not sure the number that we're going to need for fire and police, but it's going to be considerably less. But it's the training and the installation, it's a very specific software that will cost differently than what we're using in the city.
Okay, so they'll be like punch, they'll be able to swipe a card and that's what it is, that'll keep track of it that way?
Correct.
Okay. My final question, you know, yield. When we convert to UKG for the entire city, will, we be able to scale this up and have a lesser dollar value or to merge the two or no?
Yes, and that's the point, I mean, it's going to cut out the middle person, right now we have a bunch of timekeepers and so it is going to save us dollars, it's going to go direct from the punch-in and approval by the manager or whomever's over and straight to payroll. So there is that savings there and that's the goal.
Okay, perfect, thank you, sir.
Okay.
I yield.
Okay, any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round?
Madam Chair, thank you. So I just wanted to say, Mr. Smith, again, thank you so much for, for bringing in grant money to the city, it is all of our responsibility. You know, like, when we, when we go to conferences, that's what we go for, to make connections and bring back grant dollars. And so, thank you for doing your part with HR and I just want to put that on record.
And thank you, and I do want to say, you know, give the HR team a lot of credit, you know, so, you know, for me to be dedicating a lot of my time to chase this stuff around, you know, through the feds and the city and the state and all that, I have got a good team, so, HR team.
Thank you. And shout out to Candy. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, this is the vote to send Resolution 250240 to council.
Mr. Alamin? Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Priestley?
No.
A yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mushat? Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
And the vote is nine yes, zero no?
The vote is nine yes, zero no, that motion will, that resolution will be sent to council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved by the councilman in the eighth ward, supported by the councilman in the first ward. It's the vote.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mushat? Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin? Vote is nine yes, zero no?
Vote is nine yes, zero no, this meeting is adjourned at 7:25.
So Madam Chair, so is this the time for the audience members to sign up for the next meeting? Madam Chair, Madam Clerk? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay.
But if you've already submitted a slip for the last meeting, you do not need to submit one for this meeting. And I noticed that some people only checked one box or the other, so if you did not check a box, I will still read some of the names, so if you did not check a box for this meeting, but you have a slip, you can just let me know and I'll read your name.
The time is now seven at 30 PM on Wednesday, October 8th. I hereby call this legislative committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamein? Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Machette? Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Mr. Jarrett?
Present.
You have nine members present?
We have nine members present. It's now time for the reading of the disorderly persons city code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section 31-10, disorderly conduct, assault and battery disorderly persons and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning if they persist in disrupting the meeting. The individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meeting. Are there any, oh, I'm sorry, first public speaker? Nope, I'm sorry, we gotta go to the requests for agenda changes and/or additions. Seeing as all there are no requests, it is now time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box will be placed at the entrance to the council chambers for collection of registration. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaking, per speaker during public comment with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. First public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Okay, I'm gonna try to go through some of these that I know who aren't here. Um, and that did not check the box for this meeting. Stanley Wood?
All right, so again, the councilwoman Lewis, um, if you don't accept my apology right now, I'm fine with that. I understand why. I will prove moving forward, uh, my actions are going to speak louder than my words. So I just wanted to say that. Um, and while we were arguing over whether you need, uh, an answer for the abstention, I did look up the charter and we have agreed before with Attorney Gurley that the charter supersedes the council rules. And section 3-204 about voting, section D says, "An abstention shall be considered a vote, providing the council member states a reason therefore." It does not say it has to be a financial reason or anything like that. It just says that they have to state why. Um, attendance. I know we talked about, uh, Leon and his attendance while he's waiting to hear what's going on with his situation. I call him Leon because I don't recognize him as a first work council person. Because he's not, but he still has that voting right. Um, and then you guys wanted to chastise Councilman Pfeiffer, uh, for his attendance when his was a medical reason. He didn't go beat somebody and choke somebody, grab him by the hair, you know, whatever. And I sure left my hoodie off, so I was wearing purple today, by the way. Um, but let's talk about attendance of everybody, okay? Today, at 5 o'clock, when it was supposed to start, we didn't have enough people for quorum. That's attendance. It doesn't say come in at 5 o'clock or when you feel like it. It says it starts at 5 o'clock. So at 5 o'clock, everybody should be here, but if not, at least a minimum of quorum should be here. We're being held responsible to turn in our slips by that time. And if we don't, we don't get to speak, okay? But if you guys don't show up on time, that's okay. Well, it's not okay. So you need to do a better job at that. Um, councilwoman in the third ward, you've been here for two months now. Congratulations, you're getting through it. What I would like to still see, and I talked about this a couple of weeks ago, I'd like you to see, be more interactive, start asking questions when they ask, you know, if anybody's got anything to say. You know, I really want you to start really engaging in things. Um, and that way, again, it goes to show when people are saying, oh, that's a needy girl, that's a rubber stamper, it's going to prove you're not. But if you just sit there and never say anything, then people are going to be, yeah.
Thank you. Next public speaker.
Next speaker is Gladys Williamson.
Yep, and Stanley's right. You sit there and 90% of the time you look like you're sleeping. The other percentage of the time, you look like you're reading your phone, laughing with somebody on your phone. You are a rubber stamp for the mayor. And Leon, you are a woman beater. And Judy, you are a rhino. And my four, Mr. Jarrett, my city councilman, I appreciate all the fairheadedness that you keep when you come and represent me. Mr. Dennis Pfeiffer, I appreciate you. Machette, I don't even have words for you. Um, Ms. Burns, thank you for coming and for your levelheadedness in how you vote. Ms. Jerry Carter, thank you for your levelheadedness in how you vote. And Davina, when you have to speak, because God forbid that you have to speak, could you speak up so that we can hear you? Please. Okay. I'd appreciate it because when I'm sitting up here in the front and I can't hear you and you got a mic, that's pathetic. We need to hear what you're saying. And when Ms. Burns and Ms. Jerry are like leaning their heads, trying to figure out, what are you saying? That's bad. That's bad because that's a derelict of duty. Yeah, yeah. Speak up so people can hear you. Louis. I got no use for you either, Louis. And Machette, the next time you have me dragged out of here because I moved three times, listen, I am not assigned to a seat. And you gave me a second warning and had this bully of a cop grab a hold of me and hurt me to the point I had to go to the emergency? How dare you? How dare you? And if I want to call somebody a grifter, I'll call him a grifter all day. And I don't need to be given a warning and gavelled. If you're a grifter, you're a grifter. Just because you fit in with them, don't mean I can't call people grifters. And it's not like we ain't had enough of them up here begging for money. It's terrible. And these people that come up here and want this money for this store, you know, I really hope it works for them. Because yeah, we need that store.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Jason Dai.
What's going on, guys? Now that, uh, we've got done with the store, my original purpose of coming here, and I was trying to leave after the first meeting because I'm exhausted, is the, uh, police training. Why is there no mention of constitutional training for these police officers? I will refer you to a guy known as The Civil Rights Lawyer, TCRL. He's on YouTube. He's also out of West Virginia. He only does federal lawsuits and trial. That's it. He knows his stuff inside and out. He just showcased a mayor who had a, one of his police officers, who by the way, the mayor stated, had a clean record. He went to this, uh, woman's house and he had no right, you know what I mean, to ID her. He, he, she was, he was actually responding to her call. She refused to ID. He said, then you're under arrest. She said, okay, let's do it then, because she knows her rights. The minute she went to step back in her house, the cop rushed in, ended up pushing her on the couch and all this ignorant stuff in front of her son, you know, the drill. So the mayor comes out, unlike our sorry mayor, who probably don't even know the five pillars of the First Amendment, which is sickening. And that's why they don't want their police officers to know the Constitution, because then they wouldn't be their goons anymore. But this mayor come out and said, I apologize, ma'am, and said her name and said on behalf of this city for this cop, for this officer's lack of knowledge of the law, he is sworn to uphold. And an oath that he swore, you can look at this, this is right on YouTube. He's called TCRL, The Civil Rights Attorney. I obviously have no plugs with them or I wish I did. But anyway, you can go on there and see, you know what I mean, a civil rights attorney explaining constitutional violations and rights. Everything from freedom of speech to freedom of press, assembly, you name it. It's been on that site. He's very well respected. We'll have a situation like, for instance, here in Flint, where, uh, people make, let's just hypothetically paint this situation. The boxer that was out there who got pepper sprayed by the police, got a little bit of media coverage, probably nothing done to the cop or anything. That happens quite frequently in other, uh, places. And he's, just because he's in West Virginia, don't discount the fact that he's got over 2 million followers. So when he puts up a video, you'll see, oh, these police dodged these charges for a year and a half. I put up a video, 72 hours later, they're fired. You can hear that on his site over and over and over again. So I will not support anything unless these officers are receiving the constitutional training that they deserve. You're putting them in a rock and a hard place. You're putting their careers on the line to be your bodyguards. And it's BS. We, the people, are the inherent expressed beneficiaries of the United States Constitution, that every judge in every state is bound thereby. So are you who swore an oath to it, just like those guys back there. Give them what they need.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is James Moore.
Uh, you messing with my time, man. Can I get my time back? Uh, James Moore, city of Flint. I want to say an apology from early to earlier meeting. Uh, I had told y'all to get out of the city. Uh, I want to recant that. Uh, I was really trying to say, uh, if you're going to be in them seats and, and speak on behalf of the people and lead, lead on our behalf, and you're not, you do really need to get out of the seat. But don't lose, don't leave the city because our city is pretty empty. We need all the people we can get. So we do welcome y'all back-ass neighbors, but, uh, we would rather see some little bit better leadership. Um, oh, Art put me out there saying that, um, I'm the one with the one shoe under my car. And, uh, I'm glad that the people in the city of Flint has been paying attention. Did you run somebody over and just got one shoe stuck under they, uh, under your car? Uh, I wish they would pay more attention to what goes on to our government because you all play a part in spending our money. And it seem like when we come down to get for help, it's always the same result. No. You ain't getting no help, but they'll sure take your money with compounded interest daily. And, um, y'all all got the seats filled. We got, got to get something done. It ain't that much time left in the end of the year. Have a good night.
Next speaker is Arthur Woodson.
Good evening. Uh, Councilwoman Johnson, I want to start off with you. Um, it's a, you have to run next year. Um, the, the thing here is setting it to where people see you as a benefit and someone that they will vote for in November. But what I saw earlier, that is showing that you going along with those four fools up there. Calling the question, the committee meetings is for you to get, gather information to make a sound vote if you want to pass it on to city council. They up there playing games with you. And people are looking at that. And you know, you and I know each other and, and I respect you. And that's why I'm speaking to you like this, because dark and lovely wig over there don't have any conversations for her because she's a hateful, nasty person. And she gonna always be that. Don't get caught up in her hoopla because she's, she's, she's a demon child. Judy, you know I know a lot of Republicans. You are not a Republican. You move, you move like something I've never seen before. I mean, seriously, I, I had high hopes for you, thinking that you was going to get on the council and make sure the spending is not over and, and is cut. But you getting got on here and you, you, you vote for taxes, garbage, garbage cans, assessments and everything else, putting the burden on the people. You, you are not a Republican and you really need to stop calling yourself a conservative because you're not. October the 10th, uh, we will be starting a cancer feasibility study. Uh, we are having a virtual town. We are having a virtual town hall. And it's imperative that people participate in this cancer study. The Flint water caused the cancer that's here in the City of Flint. They got away with this first lawsuit. But we're gonna make sure that everybody that was affected by the water in 2014 have insurance and compensation. That's one thing that we can guarantee. Because this feasibility study is guided and led by the community. This community panel, everything is done with the community, U of M, Michigan State, Flint Health Coalition, Genesee Health Plan. All these people are together on this right here. So October the 10th, you need to be on the virtual meeting. Thank you.
Madam Clerk. Next speaker is Sherri Smith McFadden.
Sherri McFadden, First Ward. First of all, I'm gonna start off with 4816 Miami Lane. My mother lives with me and my husband, hospice. They had a gas leak for two and a half years, just came out and fixed it. The same house I've been whining about, the same house I've been telling y'all about, that need to be towed out and been burnt all this time, had a gas leak. I done called Consumer Powers numerous of times. It took my neighbors to come out one morning, two weeks ago, to smelt a whole block. My mother on hospice, directly next door. Any of y'all know what hospice mean? Your last days, my mother. Oxygen and everything. Nobody ever did anything out of can we all numerous times. I'm begging y'all to do something about the burnt-up house that's sitting next door to me, 4816, please. Now, second thing I want to do is thank Arthur Woodson. Like I said, I don't make it to all the council meetings no more, because me and my mother sitting at home, I stopped both of my jobs to take care of my mother. She on hospice. I thank you and Tanya Burns, because without y'all, I wouldn't know what the hell going on downtown. Don't mean to cuss, just real frustrated. Who back there taking shots tonight? Where do y'all meet at? Oh, they done already left. It was only one crew out here tonight. How do the city know what's going on? If this man ain't sitting here doing what he doing? If Tanya Burns don't have her podcast, how do we know as residents what's going on? Everybody seen me shake, moushey hand, moushey, I'm sorry if I say it wrong. But I thank all y'all, because if you gonna help me and my family, what I stand here for, I want to thank anybody that's gonna come out and help me and mine. I thanked her because she did something that a lot of other people didn't reach out for me and do. And I thank you again, in front of everybody. Am I for the grocery store for the north side of Flint? No. Why I'm not? Because if Krogers and Myers couldn't stand there last, my grandbaby play basketball. My husband been there 30 years, same address, ain't went nowhere. You understand, 30? If we can't have a basketball, a shovel, or a lawnmower, or a rake outside my yard, how the hell is the store gonna last? I hope all y'all understand. I'm not against it, because I need it. Because I live one block from there. I really do need that grocery store. Will it last? I hope and pray. I really do. Now, as for everybody talking about a food pantry on Wynona Seneca, whatever, let's talk about St. Luke's. Let's give Sister Carol a round of applause, because she donates 100 to 150 boxes every Friday to feed families over there on the north side of Flint. Fresh produce, fresh whatever she can get her hands on. We talking about one woman that do it every Friday, ain't going nowhere, give out clothes twice a week, and let's talk about what St. Luke's do. It's right there on the north side. Pasadena-Londale, Pasadena-McLellan, however you want to look at it. However, anybody ain't been nowhere for no time. Think about it.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk. Next speaker is Chris Morris.
Thank you, Councilor, for your time again. I want to start off by apologizing. I didn't mean to insinuate, or, you know, I guess first off, I would appreciate if all members, councilpeople, were members of the co-op. And I guess I just reiterating that I don't believe there's a conflict of interest, and I would like to state that, you know, instead of abstaining with your vote in your role as council, when there are profits and the volunteer board that represent the members vote to pay out patronage dividends, I would say that you could abstain from receiving those patronage dividends, you know, which would be the financial gain. And then still, in your role, because you wear many hats as councilpeople, but in your role, that you could still support this project that is important to you and to your constituents. So I guess I just wanted to say that and apologize, you know, because I do feel the passion. I do appreciate that you are members. You know, I understand that the grocery business is difficult, you know, and I understand there's a lot of people that expect us to fail. You know, we do have a state-of-the-art security system. We will have armed guards on site and AI technology helping us. And, you know, and a co-op is different than a typical grocery store. It's owned by the people that work there. And, you know, it's just, it's extremely important, and, you know, it's been a pleasure for me to serve the folks as we work to get this open here. And, you know, we're weeks and counting for this to hit the ground. You know, so, and with that, one gentleman, I didn't mean to imply that, you know, by saying we didn't need the funds, it's just that those funds will help, and I think it's a guaranteed, you know, return on investment in your community, you know, when I mentioned just what's gonna go out in wages and payroll. These are all Flint residents, all 40-plus that we're gonna be hiring, you know, that's gonna go back into the community, the sales taxes from the store. You know, I get it that, you know, we can't compete against the Walmarts and the Sam's Clubs and the Costcos of the world. You know, there's more and more consolidation. But with the community-owned grocery store, you know, the average person shops at four to five grocery stores. And we're only asking that they support in, you know, us as one of those shopping stops, you know? And in doing so, they have a democratic voice in what happens with the store, the direction of the store. They have the potential to get profits back from it. You know, they can be on the board of directors and help set that vision and that direction and be part of that governing board. You know, so, yeah, I just, you know, the CSMOP Foundation, I think there was a comment made that that they've covered everything we need, so why should the city invest? You know, they have not covered everything we need. The grants that we have are reimbursement grants to get us open. You know, and everything we reimburse and file for reimbursement, you know, is heavily scrutinized with receipts. And like I said, we've been through financial audits for all the money that we've received in grant funding. You know, so every penny is accounted for. When it comes to sustainability, you know, we want the city to invest in this community organization, so.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk. Before I call this last public speaker, I want to make sure that anyone who did have a slip in, that I did not read their name a second time, just let me know. Because I was just trying to avoid all the people that had left the room. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk. But the last speaker is Zoe Lynch.
Hello. My name is Zoe Lynch. I am representing NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, today. And I'd like to invite everybody in the audience, as well as in the community, and of course, the council members, to a gathering that we're going to be having on October the 15th, next Wednesday, from 6:00 to 8:30 at the farmer's market. It's going to be, the subject is on mental health. It'll be set to the Eight Dimensions of Wellness. We'll have a featured speaker, it'll be Dennis Russell from Genesee Health System, along with a panel of speakers, and several community resources will be explaining their mission. We're gonna have one of these gatherings, once a quarter, we're gonna try for. In January, the subject of our focus group is going to be on Adalysse's Boys Mental Health. And it's gonna be on January the 29th. In addition to that, we'd like, we, NAMI, would like to thank Jerry Winfrey Carter, Councilwoman, for coming to the Eye Care Walk on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing as how that was the final public speaker, it is now time for council response. Council members may respond once to all speakers. Only after all public speakers have spoken, all individual council members' response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak during council response? Seeing as how there's no one who would like to speak during council response, I will go ahead and take.
Sorry, I would like to speak.
You have the floor.
Thank you so much. So, I guess to our gentlemen in the food market, excuse me, as you see, we had an opportunity to reconsider the resolution. And this body failed to do so, when we had all nine members. So as you saw, that we had four members in full support, two members, which had a conflict of interest, because they were members. And then we had an absent member who decided not to join us. And then we also had another member that went against their word after they said that if we obtained the 1.5 million dollars, now we, excuse me, if you all obtained that funds, then they will vote for it. That's what happened. So, I just want to say, you know, we have the opportunity. We just need the political will. So we can't talk about places being food deserts without doing our part to saturate these food deserts with food resources. You know, we had individuals fighting for churches so they can give out food. Great. Churches receive their money directly through the food bank. Great, we're providing food. But right here, we have an opportunity so we can support over 900 members that have already invested in a e-rec building. You guys are getting ready to go. And the only thing that we have to do is invest in ourselves. And we have the alpha money to do just that, but we declined to do so. So it's very hurtful to see that we have, that we are playing games with the residents' money. It's very hurtful to see that we're not moving forward in the best interest of the people. So, just to let you know, I'm looking forward to the cutting of the ribbon. I'm looking forward to shopping, and I'm looking forward to supporting. And hopefully, this body will do what we are elected to do, which is to serve the residents of the City of Flint. So thank you so much for staying.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward, you have the floor.
So, I wanted to, I need to get your number. I don't have, and we can't, like, do the bag. If you can leave it with the clerk, I will have a conversation. Because one thing, we know that her lips are not filled with truthfulness. And so I want to state, I met with Ridgeway, and I've talked about that. And I did it personally. About before, and I talked to Pastor Flynn, Dr. Flynn, but he said to call him Reggie. And I've talked to him, and I knew that the 1.5 million was coming. And there were some other conversations. We all have busy lives. So I'm not absent just because. I had to have a very important conversation that probably I shouldn't have been here, but she likes to gaslight this community. The market, and I'll have that personal conversation with you as I had with Dr. Flynn, as I had with Ridgeway months ago, respectfully. And so, because I don't do all of that, but when she talks about food deserts, she probably should have supported St. Mark in her ward, where she doesn't, she gets food there, but she doesn't support to give it money, voted no on it. Let's just hope that her fingerprints ain't on that trash bag or gas cans that firebombed that church.
Oh, wait a minute, request for point of order.
Yes.
Point of order.
Yes.
The councilwoman in the sixth ward is insinuating that I'm an arsonist. And you are definitely out of order.
She is, and that is definitely out of order. I am ruling you out of order. You know exactly what you were saying, what you were doing, and what you were insinuating. You have been ruled out of order.
Do I have the floor back?
No. I'm taking the floor. You've been ruled out of order.
You don't get to take the floor. Go ahead. And no one's talking to you. Yeah. Just do that. I didn't call her arsonist. I said.
The chair can decide to take the floor. I wish y'all would read our council rules instead of always trying to argue them. I am taking the floor. Your time is up.
No.
Your time is up. We're not debating. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during the second round of discussion? What is your point?
You to the city attorney, can she take the floor? While I'm talking, I didn't call her arsonist. She, I never even said arsoness. And if you feeling like an arsonist, I don't.
Listen, you are either going to get the ruling for the attorney, or we're gonna move on, because you keep talking beyond that. The attorney is waiting for you to stop speaking. Yes, he is. I don't, like I said, the attorney's waiting for you to stop speaking. You don't continue, once you say point of order, and you're waiting for the attorney. Go ahead. Go ahead, Counselor. Go ahead.
If someone wants to submit a question to the attorney's office, you need to do so in writing through our president. That's it. Not the referee of this dispute.
Thank you very much. I am taking the floor. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during council response? Councilwoman Priestley, you have the floor.
Rule 29.8. Any person at a council meeting may be called to order by the president or any council member for failure to be germane, for vulgarity, or for speaking in excess of the allotted time, or any other violation of these rules. Rule 29.9. Any person who is called to order shall yield the floor until the chair shall have determined whether he or she is in order.
All talking must cease. Do y'all know that rule? First of all, I didn't.
You, did I, did I, I understand that you said point of order, but I am the chair, and so I have to acknowledge your point of order first. Allow me to acknowledge your point of order first. Once you say point of order, you do not get the floor to tell someone else they cannot speak. You are moving outside of what you have the capacity to do. And again.
Point of order.
No, Ms. Burns.
You need to warn yourself, because you're still talking.
Ms. Burns, that's your first warning, because I'm over it. That's your first warning. Absolutely. Let's go. Is there support?
I'll support her.
Thank you. Please put her one minute up.
So first of all, you took the floor, and she called herself an arsonist, but maybe she's feeling like an arsonist. I don't know. I didn't call her an arsonist. I just said, I hope her fingerprints aren't on that garbage bag, is what I stated. I did not call her an arsonist, although she did take a picture with them on social media. There is a picture with the alleged arsonist with her putting up smoke detectors. I'm just saying. So she called herself an arsonist.
Point of order. Go ahead. Pause the time. What's your point?
So we are talking about, this is about the point of order, right?
Correct, and she is not being germane.
Thank you.
She called herself an arsonist. I'm talking about arson.
That's not why you were warned.
Yeah. You did warn.
You appealed the chair. You appealed the ruling of the chair. That is not why you were warned. You were warned several times after that. Councilwoman Burns, go ahead, continue. Because that is not why you were warned, and you know it, and you're failing to be germane, and you're about to lose your 30 seconds for being, for failing to be germane.
My attorney is watching, and I'm fine with this, because I know my rights and I read. So my point is, I didn't call her an arsonist. So you're taking the floor for words that I didn't even use. If I wanted to call her arsonist, I would have said, Liddell, you're an arsonist. I didn't do that. I did not do that. And so you're taking the floor illegally, and Attorney Johnson, I know you're watching, because it's the same antics, and we're just logging them. Because you can't take the floor. You did illegally, when she called herself that. I did not. It's the same thing she made statements about the food market, you know, when she took shots at all the members, but you didn't correct her. So, do what you got to do.
Thank you. Thank you. Summertime. Councilwoman Burns was issued a warning because she would not stop speaking when she no longer had the floor. That is why she was issued a warning. Again, she's trying to rewrite history, when she insinuated that Dr. Lewis was an arsonist. Dr. Lewis said point of order, and from there, Dr. Lewis had the floor, and the chair could rule. This is the roll call vote for a warning for, Arthur Woodson, stop yelling out. Stop yelling out. Stop yelling out. That's your first warning. Let's go. So as I was saying, this is the roll call vote for Councilwoman Burns to have received her first warning. A no vote would uphold the ruling of the chair, a yes vote would overturn the ruling of the chair. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Mr. Hall, I mean, Dr. Lewis?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Marsha?
No.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jared is not in. Vote is three yes, five no? The vote is three yes, five no. The ruling of the chair stands. Councilwoman Burns has received her first warning. Moving back to Councilwoman Priestley, who was reading the rule about how and why I can rule on her, how I can take the floor when she's been ruled out of order.
Rule 29.9. Any person who is called to order shall yield the floor until the chair shall have determined whether he or she is in order. If a person is determined to be out of order.
Gladys, that is your first warning.
That person.
And that first warning is for you yelling out. I'm sorry, Ms. Priestley, continue.
If a person is determined to be out of order, that person must yield the floor and forfeit any remaining time.
Thank you.
Rule 29.9.
Thank you, Councilwoman Priestley, and I'm sure that her attorney has captured that as well. Thank you. Moving on, is there anyone else who would like the floor during public speaking? Um, excuse me, thank you, Councilwoman Pfeiffer, during council response.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Priestley. She didn't have the floor. She had called the point of order. And so now she. And so now she wants the floor to speak. Yeah. Go ahead.
Um, you know, I want to make it clear that to people that I do not want the food market to fail. I just don't want to give, my residents do not want them to have the money. So that is why I continually have voted no on that issue. I do not want it to fail. I grew up in that neighborhood. And when I was a kid, there was a lot of grocery stores over there. There was Kroger, there was Hamady, there was, um, Kmart right there. So I want, I want the food market to succeed. I just don't want to give it money. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response? Seeing as there's no one else who wishes to speak during council response, I will take my time. It seems we have a lot of people who, um, twist rules, don't understand rules, don't fully read rules, don't fully read the charter. Let me read to you section 3-204 of the charter. And we're talking about voting and this is section D. An extension shall be considered, excuse me, I'm going to go back to section B. Whenever city council shall hold a vote, all members shall be required to vote either a or nay. All members shall vote on every matter because the city council, unless the member, before the city council, unless the member has a conflict of interest precluding their vote, as set forth in Article 1, um, 161-602 of this charter as provided by law. So if we're going to quote the charter, let's quote the entire charter. If we're going to say something, doesn't say something, let's read section 602. Let's not give people half truths. If we're going to quote the char, the charter, quote the entire charter and what it says in a section. Moving on, it is now time for the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? Uh, we have complete separation of our one item. It has been completely separated by Councilman Pfeiffer in the eighth ward. Uh, this is ordinance 250231-T, which is the ordinance, City Code Amendment, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 131 point, excuse me, 1-314.1, prohibition of the illegal use of controlled substances by elected officials while on city property or engaged in city business. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the first ward.
Move to council.
There has been a motion to move to council. Is there support?
I support that.
It has been supported by the councilwoman in the second ward. Is there a discussion? Councilman in the eighth ward.
Uh, through you to Mr. Eddie Smith. Um, while he's walking up, um, through you to the city attorney. Um, yeah. City attorney, it's my understanding that the city attorney's office has not approved this ordinance. Is that a correct statement?
That is a correct statement.
Okay, thank you. So, um, can I get some time back? Mr. Smith, please. Mr. Smith, what does engaged in city business mean to you? For, for myself, for anyone up here, or the mayor, what does engaged in city business mean to you?
Um, thorough command of the topic, the issue.
I'm sorry?
Thorough command of topic, the issue, actively engaged or involved in it.
Okay. And in regards to this ordinance that is before us, what is engaged in city business mean?
And I'm unable to speak to that. Um, Mr. Edwards isn't here today. So, um, I cannot speak to that.
Okay. What is, uh, what is suspicion-based drug testing look for, look like? Uh, for, how, how does, so according to this, like you would be in charge of ordering us to do drug tests. So how, how does that work? If, if, if I say, um, Councilwoman Burns, I suspect her of, of doing drugs. What does that, does that mean that my suspicion to you and now you order a drug test for Councilwoman Burns? How does that work?
Human Resources would only, uh, order a drug test for employees.
Right. So what this says, elected officials of the city of Flint are subject to randomized suspicious, suspicion-based drug testing, drug testing policies applicable to sim, city of Flint, Flint employees generally. So it's that same thing. So who would be administering these suspicion-based testing?
That I wouldn't know. I really wouldn't. And I can only speak to the human resources dealing with employees and not elected officials.
Okay. So, um, madam, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Okay.
Um, madam chair, through you to the city attorney. City attorney, um, since this has not been approved by the city attorney's office, how would this be, uh, implemented? Because I mean, who would be, who would be organizing and who would be saying, who is, who is coordinating the randomization? Who is, uh, doing this, the, the suspicion-based testing?
These are all very good questions. I, in theory, I suppose counsel could approve the ordinance and then it would be subject to challenge by.
Oh, I promise you, it would be, but what, what, um, what would happen if, if, if this gets approved and, uh, someone is, whatever suspicion-based testing policy this is referring to, refuses, refuses that? What would the implications be for an elected official since they can only be removed by, uh, the governor or a recall?
Yeah. These are all very legitimate questions, which is why the law department has not approved this. I, I think this, I, I can say this without having looked at it, that, that this proposed ordinance is fraught with lots of problems.
Yes.
One of which is just a, just a, just a facial reading. One of which is, it, it only applies to elected officials. Why not appointed officials, right? So it's, it's suspect alone on that ground that it's, it's not, it's not based on a legitimate governmental.
Okay. Madam, madam chair, I make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
There's been a subsequent motion to postpone this, uh, res, excuse me, this ordinance indef, this resolution indefinitely by councilmen in the eighth ward has been supported by the councilwoman in the sixth ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Dr. Lewis?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
I abstain. I need more information on this.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jared is not in. Mr. Hallam. Vote is four yes, two no, one abstention?
The vote is four yes, two no, one abstention. So that motion fails. So we're going to go back to our original motion to send to council. Is there discussion in the first round? Councilman Pfeiffer has already had his discussion. Councilwoman in the sixth ward, go ahead.
Thank you. To you too, Mr. Smith. I know it's going to take him a second. Um, Mr. Smith, can you come back? I'm sorry you had to go back down. But while he's coming down, um, I did have a question, um, to, um, the city attorney, um, in regards to, um, the ambiguous language that we do have here. And is it, and they'll give you time to probably look it up. Do, um, it says elected, it doesn't state specific to city council. So would that include school board members, any judges that were elected to the city of Flint? Um, my board and where, where would be the limit? Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so with the HR department, so the HR department, we don't use the HR department. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So we, we're not, we are not city employees. We are elected officials.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you. And to you, Madam Chair, to the city attorney, um, Attorney Sparrow. Uh, with, with that question, um, I mean, I think we have a lot of, some drugs that they don't even know, are they synthetic? That there's, there's a drug that's being sold at gas stations and party stores that mimicking other drugs, like it is a illegal or a different substance. So I don't know where the first trend or first responders, but I would not want a, a first responder being, um, under the influence of probably anything because they're driving a vehicle. We don't have city vehicles. So I don't know how that was, you know, correlating. We do not have, nor does the city pay for insurance for our vehicles at all. And then would that be a problem, say like we had, you know, no, uh, having drinks or whatever? When we're at conferences, they have, when you get there, you get drink tickets, literally. So I don't know how we, I mean, I think this is over policing. I will say despite, um, and as for all night, I have not seen on this council what I would consider to be suspicious behavior to where I would say, oh, that person is inebriated. I haven't seen that. And so when we, um, see that we have this, the language is. Huh? You, you may need that to make it through. And so when, and so when we look at, um, this, I'm concerned about the limit to school boards, judges, because it just says elected city official. Would that be just, it doesn't state city council. So which elected officials?
Those are all very good concerns. Again, just in a facial reading, I think this would only apply to officials of the city of Flint. So for instance, just because of the officials in the city of Flint doesn't mean it would apply. It certainly wouldn't apply to judges in this city or members of elected officials who are not actually officials of this entity, the city of Flint.
Okay. And what would be the penalty? What is, so if we're taking drug tests, where is there a penalty? What is the penalty for if you have something? And most, um, opioids, or say if someone had back surgery, it's expected they're going to get some type of, um, over the, or some drug that is, um, monitored by the federal government for, for relief of pain, which then we would come into HIPAA, which they have privacy, um, that we're not entitled to. So we're then getting some health histories, some people that we're not entitled to underneath suspicious behavior.
Yeah, I, I just, I agree. There are numerous apparent, numerous problems with this, with this proposed ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Is there anyone else in the first round of discussion? Councilwoman in the fourth ward.
So one of my concerns about this, and, um, um, I had discussion with a councilman, a colleague earlier in the day about this, this proposed legislation. That's why I didn't want to vote to postpone it indefinitely right away is because I wanted to bring this out, is that we're elected officials. The only people who really have, can do anything if we do something illegally is the voters. So there is no teeth to this. We're just saying, oh, you can be tested. So what happens when you're tested? It goes up public and it creates, you know, your political enemies can use it and it just becomes a, a hack against you.
For information.
You said request?
Yes. Even if we are tested, they can't release it because it would be HIPAA violation, even.
That's true too.
So, so how do, what's the point?
That's true too. So, and, and I, and I voted against, this is not the first time we've seen this legislation. And I voted against it before. And I'm, I have serious concerns about it, but I wanted to bring out that fact in discussion before I voted to postpone it indefinitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the first round of discussion?
I have some concerns. So you said.
Would you like the floor?
They wouldn't be able to. It's a HIPAA violation.
I'm sorry.
Why would it be a HIPAA violation? I was talking to Ms. Oh, request for information. I'm sorry. Why would it be a HIPAA violation?
Because personal medical information cannot be released.
But if your job is requesting it, it wouldn't be HIPAA. It is, I mean, I'm just saying, because I am, I am a bus driver, right? I am, I am obligated at any time to do a random. I am. Okay? And it's not a HIPAA violation if I'm required to do a random. So I do know about.
No, no, no. I'm not saying that the testers would be a HIPAA violation. I'm saying the result, releasing those results to the public would be a HIPAA violation.
That would be a HIPAA violation.
So.
So my question is that are we doing randoms? And so it's not random. So if we're not doing randoms, I guess I'm not understanding. Oh, it's still this, uh, point of information that I need.
No, you got, you have the floor.
Okay. If we're not doing randoms, um, and why are we doing drug testing on elective officials? That's against what I want to know. I mean, because I am prone to, because I do drive buses for a living. I do deal with children. I am subject to a random drug test. I, if I'm suspicious, if they smell it, I am subjected, you know, that's what, if you smell something, um, then that would be, um, I would be, have to go for a drug test. If I'm in an accident and it's my fault, then I have to go for a drug test. So I'm trying to see.
Request for information.
Go ahead.
That's not how that works. What's your request?
Oh, I'm sorry.
To the speaker, is that while you're driving the bus only or in your own private vehicle?
That's why I'm driving. Uh, but not, well, no, no. I mean, if I, you know, if I'm driving and I have an accident, that's in my, in, in, in the bus. But if they smell, smell, um, um, you know, smell of substance on me, then I am subject to a random, um, I mean, to, you know, go in immediately or go in immediately for an accident. So my question would be, I'm not understanding, how did it come into the elective officials? And then if we do do a drug test, who, like I said, who's going to do it? And who's going to do the discipline? What would happen if we get caught with marijuana in our system? Because opiates, and they said, you know, drugs that we get from, um, from our doctors, say Xanax or anything that can trigger, um, what they call it, um, the, the other ones, I can't think of what they call. But those are prescribed, um, medicines. So we can bring in prescriptions for that. So why would we, basically, why are we subjected to doing a random or suspicious? That's what I kind of want to know. So it doesn't make sense to me, but maybe to everybody else.
Are you yielding the floor? Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to? Councilman in the first ward.
You know, it's not uncommon for a business to, to require drug testing for its employees. So if private citizens must, uh, be submitted to drug testing, then I feel like elected officials can too as well. Now, it's not a perfect doctrine or ordinance, excuse me. Um, it's a few things that maybe need to be added in here, especially about like the penalties and who, who will, uh, do the drug testing and things like that. But I think, um, that our residents would like to know that their elected officials are not impaired and that they're bringing that A-game when it comes to voting on resolutions that we, we, we dealing with millions and millions of dollars and things like that and so forth. And then some of our employees already get just screened to drug tested. So I feel like it should just be evened across the board where nobody should get drug tested. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the first round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward, you have the floor.
Thank you. So my colleague did raise some, um, some great points. Um, yeah, Councilwoman in the third ward. So Steve did, and thank you so much, Councilman Hallam. Because again, this may not be a perfect document, but it's definitely a necessary document. Part C stated, um, that, that the city of Flint, um, excuse me, that elected officials of the city of Flint are subject to any randomized, um, or suspicion-based drug testing. So that's saying that they will be random. And so I understand adding appointed officials as well because at the end of the day, you are representing the city. I heard my colleagues make mention of, you know, we don't drive city vehicles. You are absolutely right. But we pass the monies necessary to drive city vehicles. We are responsible for the city's purse strings. So we must make sure that we are thinking clearly and lucid whenever we are dealing with the city's business. The residents, they elected us for a reason. They elected us because they had trust in us that we will serve them and that we will be coherent and that we will be, um, as I say, um, I get, free from illegal drugs as we do our, we have our meetings. Now, I, I hear that people. Now, I, I hear that people have their reservations and that's fine, but I want to make sure that we're making it fair, you know, as we put demands on our employees and just like the councilman said, in many other organizations, they have to be drug tested to do their job. So why is it fair for the employees to be drug tested, but not the people that pass the millions of dollars that govern these employees? It doesn't make sense. I don't understand why we are fighting so hard when we had our councilwoman in the sixth ward last meeting state, drug test me, I don't care. So when we have colleagues that say that, you'll be under pressure that they will be for making sure that we all are thinking lucid and clear and that we are for it. But now unfortunately, I hear that we have a change of heart. What I don't want to do, I don't want to act like that we don't have.
Please pause the time. What is your point?
She, she needs to be warned for rule forty-three point twenty-one. It's no change of heart. The document just hasn't been vetted.
So Councilwoman Burns, state the rule that's violated, not that someone needs to be warned because that's not your.
Forty-three point twenty-one, she's speaking to my motives, but I have a change of heart. I haven't said I was supporting or not supporting this document. If not, she's speaking to my motives of voting. I didn't say I wasn't supporting it and I can pass a drug test every day of the week.
Please continue, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So I, I look forward to having her support and also her input as we build this ordinance, because this is not just going to affect this council, but this is for council bodies to come. Because yes, we have seen chaos. We've seen people become unglued. We've seen colleagues throw down city property. We've seen colleagues yell out F you. We've seen a lot of crazy things happen from the, from this area up here, from our elected officials. And so we want to make sure that as we continue to serve you, as we continue to do our job, that we're doing it drug-free. We can't pass opioid dollars when we up here using opioids. How does that sound? I mean.
Abusing, not using, abusing.
Thank you, thank you. So yeah, if we're abusing opioids, we can pass opioid dollars? We need to be clear in our thinking and it's not from a punitive point of view. We too often talk about the penalties. Let's look at it as an opportunity to help our colleagues. So this isn't anything to demonize one. This is one to give you the help that you need as we continue to do our work that we're elected to do. Now what, now how your residents feel, that's, that's between them and the recall. Just like they attempted to recall me five times, your residents can take that up with you. However, this body isn't trying to punish you. This body is trying to ensure that we are giving you the help that you deserve to serve on this body. Because as we pass monumental legislation, as we erase medical debt, as we pass programs for autistic children, as we do great things like that, we want to make sure that we're on our Ps and Qs and we're operating in the best interest of our residents, that we are clear and that we're focused. So when you hear people fighting this, it may make others think that they, I mean, it may make others conclude other conclusions. I'm not here to do that. My job is to make sure that we are passing good legislation and I'm definitely open to let's amend it. Don't shoot it down, let's amend it. Because this is important for our city. This is important for our body. This is important so we can do our job that we was elected to do. And that help could extend beyond council. This help can help you in, in your private life. So again, let us help each other as we do the business of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing as I am the last one in the first round of discussion, I will go ahead and take my time. Dr. Lewis will say it. So this is my thing. I voted to postpone indefinitely simply because the law department said they did not have a hand in. It was that simple for me. I will support this if this comes back before us and the law department has had a chance to look at it. I'm for it. Test for everybody. We can all stand together and take a test. I don't care. Test, test away. I do think that there are other instances where laws and government officials and elected officials have, or people that put policies in place, it also, it often seems to be drug test for thee and none for me. So I feel like nobody should be above being drug tested. That's just the reality. And so once our law department has a chance to take a look at this, I do want to, because there was a question, as stated earlier, that they weren't clear on who was included. If you read the ordinance, section B in the ordinance says elected officials of the city of Flint, who while on city property or engaged in city business are involved in an accident resulting in injuries to others or damage or city property are subject to any drug testing policies applicable to city of Flint employees. And so this is clear that this is for elected officials who are elected to council or mayor or something of that nature. I do think that it should also include appointees. I'm fine with that as well. I, I just want our law department to have an opportunity to properly vet it, because as we know, folks like to have lawyers on triggers ready to sue when we should be trying to protect our city. But just so that we can cover our bases, my support of this is going to come after our law department vets this, only because that is the responsible thing for us to do on our end. But I'm all for a drug test. Let's do it. Is there anybody who would like the floor and that, I'm, I'm yielding my time there, Madam Secretary? Is there anyone who would like the floor in the second round of discussion?
What do I say? So I disagree and, and agree in part, meaning like if you're doing drugs, I don't want you next to me. I don't want you putting city business or city money if you're not the correct state of mind. A hundred percent agree with that. I disagree with how this will be administered and, and people giving up their rights. Because the administration, I mean, they, through all the departments, they are the ones that enforce ordinances. So the administration having this in their back pocket to weaponize against individuals that they don't like. This is a hundred percent weaponization of, oh, you've been randomized or, oh, there was a suspicion report, here you go again. Like this is a weaponization of it because like, like how does a policy? I just want to know how the policy is going to be administered? Because we're going to hire somebody out and then they're going to take suspicion reports and they're going to do randomization? It doesn't, it's, it's nonsense. The, there are laws in place and there's why, there's a reason why there's no municipality in the state of Michigan where elected officials get drug tested. Because there are laws that say that people can be removed if they're, whatever those qualifications are for the governor to remove them or by recall. There are processes in place. So to me, this is just a, a political maneuver to weaponize this against certain elected officials. I promise you, if the, if the administration is monitoring this, there's never going to be a suspicion report or randomization, because you won't even be able to ask if the mayor was, because it would be HIPAA violation. So it, it, and you're going to, so you're going to arrest me for a misdemeanor because I don't go do a random drug test or some, somebody reports a suspicion to me and like I'm going to be arrested? Like see you in court. I'll see you in court. Because you, you talk about people jumping to attorney because like people have rights. So yes, I'm all for it if it's, but there's got to be so many different laws. There, there'll probably have to be a book of law, a book of, of this ordinance to capture everything.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the second round of discussion? Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
I have you two attorney, Sparrow. I don't see Mr. Smith. Are all city employees drug tested? Because I don't think that they are anymore.
I, I do not know the answer.
Yeah. I don't think that they are, because when I worked for the city, I didn't have to take a drug test and it has stopped. Yeah, but you know what? It's just, I'm going to be nice to you because she's over there talking. So here's the issue where it will be, I, I don't even, yeah, I don't even have time because here's the thing, and I feel, I agree with you, Councilman Pfeiffer, that it will be randomized. All people don't, all departments don't have drug tests. And so if we're going to have it just, it has to be, if it's, it's everyone, but according, it's a constitutional right. We came in some issues when I spoke with my attorney, because one of the issues when I had to go to court, because on a, a personal protection or Councilman Leon L. Alamein stated, I was a known alcoholic and cocaine abuser. Never used cocaine, never used crack, never smoked crack cocaine or I don't even smoke weed. And so the judge, Hannibal, threw it out. And so he put a blatant lie on there. I have to pass a drug test yearly because of licensing and I've done that. Now, people like to recreational use marijuana because it's legal, it's legal. And that's their, their, their business. I don't do that. And so he, and so maybe that's where that's coming from, where he slandered me with a, a total lie. So I don't have problems with passing drug tests, never have for my entire life, period. But I think that this could be used to like, if I'm agreeing, in agreement with you, Councilman Pfeiffer, for people in a way to, to show, to where you're going to be subject in whose suspicion? Because if a person is telling a lie, like a lie was told on me, he stated I was a known cocaine and.
Councilwoman Burns, can we pause the time?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Burns, I need you to stay within the scope of what's happening in this meeting. I don't need you to go outside of any legal battles that you're having with other council members. I, but what I'm saying to you is I need you to stay within the scope of what's happening in this meeting and not going off and accusing or attacking people in your talking, in your speaking. We need to stay, we need to stay within. Councilwoman Burns, you know what you're doing and you know what I'm asking you to stop doing. So please.
So it was under suspicion and stated, because suspicion is in here. It says suspicion that I was a cocaine user and known alcoholic by Councilman Leon Alamein. It was a lie.
Councilwoman Burns, Councilwoman Burns. You know what you're stating and you know what you were just asked. So either you are going to go ahead and yield the last 27 seconds or you're going to take your 27 seconds and just continue with your reasoning.
Okay, let me finish, because we talked about suspicion and what you're doing is limiting my freedom of speech.
I'm not limiting your freedom of speech, Councilwoman Burns.
Would be, and that's the actual fact. It's not something that's hypothetical that happened. It wasn't hypothetical. So what I'm saying, we talk about suspicion and we have to address, and it's not defined in our charter what suspicion is. It's not defined as to what it is, but.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the second round of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
Thank you. And I just want to, you know, apologize on behalf of the councilwoman in the sixth ward, who just can't be brought to order. And that behavior is kind of erratic. And you know, it, some people may think that my, that behavior may be influenced by illegal substances. As we sit up here.
Please pause the time. I believe you had a point of order, Mr. Pfeiffer.
We just went through the same thing about the whole arsonist thing. She is insinuating that Councilwoman Burns is on drugs. Hundred percent.
No. Hundred percent. That's not what I said. I, I will restate what I said. I said, the fact that she speaks out of turn and stuff and her erratic behavior may lead one to believe that. That's exactly what I said. That, that's what I said. And so again, I, well, I have the floor and she continues to yell out. That's what I'm talking about.
Can we pause the time? I actually needed to go back to 2:34. I needed to go back to 2:34. Councilman Pfeiffer, wrap up your point. That you, you wrapped it up? I understand. So the difference is Councilwoman Burns opened the door and wouldn't close it when I asked her to, when she talked about Councilman Alamein. I didn't take her time, I let her keep it. I said to her several times, can you stop talking about outside insinuations? I'm talking about just now.
I'm talking about the.
That was, yeah, that was another time. But what I'm saying to you right now is I literally just let her keep talking after I, I was telling her to close the door, she wouldn't close the door. I asked her to stop talking about an outside case where she had an accusation and she wanted to keep saying, well, it's suspicion, it's suspicion. I asked her to stop going down that road. I asked her to stop. Councilwoman Burns, you had a point of order as well. Go ahead.
You, you need to warn, there is no difference, the similarities, point of order. You need to tell her to stop going down that road as she is insinuating, although she's given the definition and implied, her words are implied references that I may be, she knows I'm, I'm not. You know, that'd be like me saying she's on drugs when she fell asleep with her narcolepsy on my couch and I didn't do that.
So we're going to leave that door open, Councilwoman Burns? Is that what we're doing? We're going to leave the door open? You asked me to close it, but then you go ahead and take it off the hinges. What we're doing? We closing it or we putting it back on the hinges? What are we doing? Let me know. Continue, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you so much. So see as I sat here passionately waited for the chair to get this together, yeah, this is what council members in their right mind supposed to do. This is what, this is how we're supposed to act. You don't go back and forth with the chair, argue with the chair. And I'm okay. Me and my narcolepsy, we're, we're, we're okay. But guess what? You can test my narcolepsy. Can we test you for drugs? And so I will love to bring this back.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Come on, we're not doing back and forth. The council rules state, pause the time, please take it back to 2:20 and pause the time. This is the thing that is happening here. Council members shouldn't even be speaking to each other. Everybody in here, according to our rules, everybody in here, from the council members to the people at the leg turn, to the attorney, everything is supposed to be directed to the chair. You all keep having interactions with each other that you should not be having. Stop the interactions with each other. The rules state that it is supposed to be directed to the chair. Councilwoman, 2:20, 2:20 on the clock.
Respectfully, respectfully, Madam Chair, if we are allowed to talk, she keep interrupting. She interrupt you, she interrupt us. She been doing this all meeting and this is what she does. Again, people that are lucid, they don't do this. And so again, not taking a personal jab as she like to do for content, great. But that's why we're here to stop this. We want to make sure that those that sit in this seat, that they are serious. Any narcolepsy medicine that I take will be legal. And so I'm okay with that. And so I'm not here to throw cheap shots because you're an easy target. So let's go ahead and I'm totally fine with sending this back so we can get it in order. But I'm serious about this body going in a different direction. Mr. Pfeiffer talks about retribution. He said, when this council flips in August, it's going to be retribution.
Please pause the time. Well, you guys didn't let her finish the sentence before you called the point of order. So now you don't know. Let her finish the sentence, then call your point of order. Go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
Anyway, this is not the retribution that he was talking about. We're not try, we're not trying to get retribution on anyone. What we're trying to do is move this body in a positive direction. We're trying to move this body to conduct the business of the city. That's what our late councilmen advocated for weekly as he came to meeting before he passed. Before we let his seat go vacant for over 300 days. Now that we have someone in that seat that has a heart and a like mind for Flint, we can move forward. And I just want to compel my colleagues to join us, because we will move this city forward whether you are with it or not. So with this drug ordinance, I welcome everyone and let's make it what it need to be so we can make. So, with this drug ordinance, I welcome everyone and let's make it what it need to be so we can make good policy for this city. But what we won't do is continue to waste the people's time and grandstand for views, likes and shares. Not gonna happen. So I appreciate my colleagues for, for chiming in. I will take this with me as I work with the attorney to beef this up, to give the residents the drug policy that they deserve as we move this city forward. Now, I don't know where people gonna be at the end of this term, but I guarantee you, we're gonna make these chambers a place where the people want to come back for their democracy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like the floor? Did the clock go? Oh, is there anyone else who would like the floor in the second round of discussion? Councilman in the first ward.
Through you to the attorney. Um, I have a question. So just to say if this did pass to go to council in that, in the period of time of us having the opportunity to, um, look at it and you guys take a look at it, could the amendments and suggestions that people have made today be done? And if it was brought in front of council with those amendments made to it?
I'm happy, it's echoing. So I, could the amendments be made and then what?
If you, I'm just saying if it just passed today, if this passed today to move to council, in that period of time, by the time we come back to these chambers, could you guys take a look at it, make some adjustments, these amendments, these suggestions that people have made today? And then it would be ready for the next council?
Now, I, the next council meeting's too soon. This is a fairly complicated issue. There's several constitutional issues here. I think the law department would need at least 30 days, at least. Yep.
Okay.
Are you yielding the floor? Okay, is there anyone else in the second round of discussion? Seeing as how there's no one else in the second round of discussion, just gonna reiterate again that I am all for the drug testing. I'm fine with it. There are obviously some things that need to be hammered out. We'll get it hammered out. Um, and whether it takes the full 30 days or it comes back before then, uh, if it is something that our law department is confident in, then I will surely go ahead and pass it because again, I'm good with drug testing. I don't, I don't care if you're drug testing one of the nine of us. I don't care if you're drug testing the mayor. I don't care who you're drug testing. I'm cool with it. So, um, this is the roll call vote to send ordinance 250231-t to council. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Johnson.
I'm staying. Need more information.
Ms. Priestley, no. Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Jared is not in. Mr. Alamin?
No.
Dr. Lewis?
No.
And, um, I would like to change my vote to no. Thank you.
The vote is zero yes, seven no.
Look at that agreement. The vote is zero yes, seven no. There's been a motion to adjourn by the councilman in the eighth ward, supported by the councilwoman in the fourth ward. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Priestley? Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jared is not in. Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah.
Vote is seven yes, zero no.
The vote is seven yes, zero no. The time is 8:52 PM on Wednesday, October 8th. I hereby adjourn the legislative committee.
But you know, our whole domestic violence.
What?
It's just so immature. That is really silly. Seriously. And now, what'd you say? The woman up to say that to me is what you need to do. You, you really do. You, you, you need to, yeah, she needs to stop. But listen, I haven't said anything. She's down there just cracking jokes and running her mouth and cheating. No, 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 I don't care. But, but you know what? Yeah.
The time is now 8:50 AM on October 8th. I hereby call this governmental operations committee meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Hey, Mr. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley? Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Michelle?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jared is not in. You have three members present.
We have three members present due to, um, a lack of quorum. It's 8:59 PM. This, uh, government operations committee meeting is now adjourned.